Yes.
Councilwoman Dour, can you hear us?
Start.
Test, test, test. Councilwoman Dour, can you hear us?
Yes, I can now. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I'll be there in about fifteen.
Sounds good. I'll let the clerk know. Thank you.
Are we ready?
Second, please.
Thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor, we are ready whenever you are.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Wednesday, April twenty-seventh, meeting of the Reno City Council meeting. So happy to see everybody here this morning in their jeans. It's pretty exciting. We're going to open with the Pledge of Allegiance. And if we could get, if you're wearing jeans today, stand up and we'll all, in unison, will do the pledge. Ready? Three, two, one.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our people.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you. I'm going to call roll now. Mayor Hillary Sheevy is absent at this time. Jenny Brekis?
I'm here today.
Naomi Dour?
Here.
Oscar Delgado? Bonnie Weber? Neoma Jordan?
Here.
Devin Reese?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, at this time, I believe we're going to move into the proclamation before we do public comment. Is that what you have? Okay.
That's fine.
Fantastic. Well, today's a very special day in honor of Denim Day. And if we could, for all of those that are here for this day, if you could come to the podium, and then I'll come down and we're going to read a proclamation. Get closer. Come see up. Fantastic. Look at this turnout. Oh, there's Madam Mayor. I'm wearing, yes. I just got told that I looked fly, so it made my day. So what a tremendous day, what a day of importance here on Denim Day. And I'm here to read this proclamation on behalf of this critically important day. And I have forgotten my readers. I think they're sitting at my spot. Which, for the young'uns in the room, means I can't see anything. Thank you. Yes, yes, with my readers, I can, I can read. Okay, we'll begin this proclamation. Whereas the month of April is National Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and whereas the Victim Services Unit within the Reno Police Department seeks to serve and support survivors by treating them with respect and dignity while responding to their needs and concerns in order to provide the most professional and empowering advocacy possible. And whereas Denim Day has been observed since nineteen ninety-nine as a symbol of protest in response to an Italian High Court decision to overturn a rape conviction because the victim wore tight jeans, which she had to help remove, obviously, during the sexual assault. Whereas every year since nineteen ninety-nine, community members elected officials, businesses, and students, which have organized to make a social statement by wearing jeans as a visible means of protest against myths that surround sexual assault. And whereas the city of Reno is committed to supporting the Denim Day initiative, as there is no excuse and never an invitation to rape. Now therefore, I, Vice Mayor Neoma Jordan, on behalf of Hillary Sheevy, Mayor of the City of Reno, do proclaim Wednesday, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, as Denim Day.
I just want to thank you on behalf of the Reno Police Department Victim Services for honoring survivors today and really recognizing the misconceptions that still surround sexual assault and creating greater awareness around that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Chief? You're good? Okay. We're gonna, we're all coming in into the well, so we'll all go under the tape or we'll take it down here.
Like two thousand nineteen.
An apple box.
We need to start and then, okay. One, two, three. It's exciting because it's actually a large group.
We have a couple that need to get in.
Oh.
They're pretty big.
One more. Three, two, one.
Real nice.
What's in preview?
You know, with all of our jeans on? Oh, you don't have a jean jacket? You should have, you guys should have had me. I think I've got two of them.
Madam Mayor, are you ready to move on to public comment? Okay. Madam Mayor, our first item today is public comment. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the council's agenda. Please note that the council may not take action upon any matter not agendized on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. If you are an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. Lastly, while in the room, please be respectful. Warnings will be issued by the presiding officer if there is disruptive behavior. You will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues. And if you are ready, first up, we have Mr. Terry Brooks, followed by Sam Gettle.
Good morning, Terry.
Good.
Nice to see you this morning.
Good morning. Good morning. It's me, Terry Brooks, again. And today I'd like to address following the money when it comes to homelessness. It seems that mostly rich people own most of the real estate here, while the poor own very little of the real estate here. So it's the poor who pay a lot of rent, and it's the rich who collect a lot of rent. Most food stores and restaurants are owned by wealthy people, while a very few are owned by poor people. So in some cases, it's the poor who pay for the food, while a lot of rich people make profits from the food. A lot of big businesses are owned by wealthy people, while the lowest-paid workers are mostly poor people. So when people become unemployed, the rich employers save more money. But it's the poor unemployed who lose a lot of money. And it's the wealthy areas where there are the best schools. But in the poor areas, there are not the best of schools. Poor young people can't afford to go to college, while the wealthy people can afford to buy their kids' way into college. It's the poor people who can't afford good health, but the wealthy people can because of their wealth. It's the wealthy people who own and can sell medications, while the poor cannot afford to buy such medications. Very few wealthy people suffer from forms of mental illness, but a lot of poor people do suffer from forms of mental illness. The rich don't have to worry about being mentally stable, but the poor don't feel so positive because they are not able. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today and for not charging me for saying what I say. Oh, by the way, this is chapter twenty-nine.
I love it.
There's seventeen chapters, and then an explanation of why I write the way I do, and then acknowledgements, and that'll be the end of the book.
Okay, I'm looking forward to it. I can't wait to see the book.
Yep.
It's almost done. How, how much longer?
If I come here twice a month, it'll probably be about January when I'm done.
All right.
And then you're going to publish it, right? Okay.
I am.
We got a deal.
I told you. I'm excited.
I'm already thinking about starting another book.
Okay, there you go. We love that, too. Great job, Terry.
Next up, we have Sam Gettle, followed by Deanne Radcliffe.
Hi, my name is Sam Gettle, and I'm just going to read something that I wrote last night. I'm here today offering my unbridled thanks to the City Council in providing the funding and approval of the plans for the street and alley improvements in and around the block with Plumas on the east, Humboldt Street on the west, St. Lawrence on the north, and Reno Street on the south, located in the Midtown Residential Zone District. As managers of that project, Jonathan Smith and Kevin Williams both have shown true leadership and management skills in guiding the project in a manner that so far has been efficient, workable for me and my tenants, and in short, he's been very gracious, and that's a rare commodity in today's world. Kevin works and coordinates well with Granite Construction, who is doing the alley as we speak. The alley is in the middle of the block. Will be repaved after the messy business of the new sewer line is completed. If the new beautiful alley is named, that event alone will trigger the various GPS systems and other data systems into the allowance of the six families residing in the alley to have dependable mail service for mail and medications, as well as reliable package deliveries and accurate essential nine-one-one coverage. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next up, we have Deanne Radcliffe, followed by Jerry Misad.
I have a PowerPoint.
We are getting that pulled up.
Good morning, members of the Reno City Council and mayor. Thank you so much for your service. It's that magical time where you're going to get that one-sided feedback. Anyway, I'm here to talk about verdi traffic. I know that shocks you all. So anyway, a little bit about myself. I was born at St. Mary's, and I'm a lifelong resident. My dad served the Reno Fire Department. So here we go on verdi roads once again. So this is a picture of an intersection. That's the Chevron there, and there's a lot happening. You guys see that? So I just want to point out the ADTs are average daily trips. According to N dot S trina data, are on the bottom. So you're looking at fourteen hundred on one ramp, seven forty off, twenty-four hundred on, on eastbound ramp. So there's a lot of stuff happening. Twenty-one hundred cars coming off. And you see those black Xs. Those black Xs are three different entrances and exits to this particular site. You see tons of cars, bicyclists, and that's our reality, right? I mean, twenty-one hundred ADTs on that spot, and that's twenty-twenty data, right, guys? So that's just going to go up. So there's a lot of stuff happening. When my kids are in the car, I talk about how this person did not pass traffic engineering school because it's just crazy. There's just, quite frankly, too many choices. You can go left, you can go right, and I'm going to show you all the craziness that happens. So here's where people want to head to. This is a key point. All of these arrows are headed in the wrong direction. Please note, this is the off-ramp. Your car should travel like my mouse. You'd go left, you'd go right. If you want to come over here, you could go left into that, right into Boomtown. But here's what happens. People go the wrong way, definitely. They go across here, they make a left going a wrong way, they make, again, just too many choices, and it's unsafe. This is some close-ups of what it looks like. Obviously, this is not the mark of a safe roadway, right? The sign's been plowed down, there's tire marks there in the dirt. These are really, really tragic, real situations as a result of this interchange. Someone died. Oh, my gosh, that is absolutely horrific, you guys. Again, a pedestrian is hit and killed, and this is all the same area. So why am I here to talk to you today? I'm here to talk to you because, as we know, there's a lot of city Reno property and development out there now. I am here to ask that the city follow the promises in our settlement agreement. That's that legal thing that predates all of you that the property owners did. So those could be, right, the settlement agreement is a contract. I would like to, in the next thirty to forty-five days, we need better signage, we need to reduce the speed limit on garson, we need RPD to enforce existing laws, we need to re-engineer and eliminate that crazy entrance into the Chevron from that off-ramp, you guys, collaborate on safety signage, and then really, most of all involve the verdi residents. I'm sure this is on an RTC study in the future, and I can really appreciate that, but that's kicking the fifty-gallon barrel down the road. These are issues now, and there's an opportunity, as all this development is approved, to make this safe for existing county residents, but more importantly, all of your new City of Reno residents and all that development happening out there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Up next, we have Jerry Misad.
Wow. Hi, Hill.
Nice to see you. We all haven't seen each other in a very long time.
Well, we'll keep that between me and you.
I think that goes for all of us.
My name is Jerry Misad, AKA Jerry the Pizza Man. I've formerly had my own television news show, so I'm a pretty savvy guy, though I've been looked upon as a weary old man that's going to come up here and mumble. I've been on the War Three Neighborhood Advisory Board, invited by Councilman Delgado, and I think I was put on that board so I would speak in a politically correct way and not come to the comment section. That's why I was fired. And I wasn't given any reason for being fired. But we have elections coming up. I recommend that drug testing be done as you apply to run for office and while you're in office every couple of months. Term limits? Madam Mayor, you've been mayor of this town for ten years. Come November, your driver's license expires a couple of months beforehand. I would really put that in mind, or else you can't run. But we need term limits. You want fourteen years. Give somebody else a chance, maybe like Eddie Lorton. There's a perennial running guy for mayor. If he could get all those senior votes, and I could guarantee them, I don't think you're going to go beyond November. But then again, you've served the city well. I don't think anybody on the City Council should be accepting money from the casinos or the row and what have you. But you do. Let's quickly move to Taglia Park in my area, town. You didn't like it when I called in the federal EPA to check out the ponds unofficially. And those ponds will heat up during the summer, which is coming up, and it'll turn from a color form, and I gave you a form on that, and it'll turn into E. coli. Do you really want that? I talked to the Taglia family. They're highly disappointed in how the park is being treated. Where's the dog run that you promised me? You told me you had one point two million dollars. Well, to clean up the ponds, it's going to cost you three million, according to the federal EPA. The drug dealing going on in my neighborhood is horrendous. I've gone after the meth dealers, and the trail has led to these doors. And when I've tried to contact people here, I've been stonewalled by the Chief of Staff and what have you. I've tried to contact you many a times, and I've gotten no return. When we used to have a working relationship, I'm very disappointed in that. But you want me to be respectful when I come up here. We share the same birthdate, Mayor. October twelfth. I've checked out your ID. I just want to thank you for allowing me to come up here and to continue my service. My slogan for seniors is, "We're still here, and we're not done yet."
Good job.
I got one hurrah.
Good job.
Have a good day.
All right, you too.
I believe that is everyone that signed up, and I do not see anyone raising their hand on the Zoom call. For the record, we received thirteen comments, which were general in nature or not directly associated with an agenda item prior to four PM on April twenty-sixth. These comments were written correspondence received via our Reno.gov online public comment form or by email to our office. Copies of these comments have been distributed to the Reno City Council and are available to the public on the Reno.gov meeting portal. Two were in favor, two in opposition, and nine expressed concern.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'm going to send it over to our city manager, and if you have any updates or clarifications on this agenda, please do so now.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Item D2 needs a little bit of work. I'd like to pull that off today's agenda. Otherwise, happy to proceed with no changes.
All right, fantastic.
All right, may I, may I comment on the agenda also? Item D4, it says in there that the accompanying materials will be sent to the council via the April 27 meeting. I think those came in on Monday. I didn't have a chance for an agenda meeting to go over those with staff. Likewise, this is about the city's, an update to the city's strategic plan. I was, I was asked to have a meeting with staff, and I declined it, as is common. If a meeting shows up on my calendar, I'll decline it if I'm not available, but 99.9% of the time, a follow-up time is requested of me, and one never came forward, and then now it's been rolled up. So we have a strategic plan that, you know, process instead of, and so I wasn't given an opportunity to meet with our staff on that. So I'm requesting that this get moved off also.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
Okay, since the motion did not, and I just want clarification, since the motion was not amended to move back D4, the city's strategic plan to allow input from one of the members, we'll just, I'll hold my comments until we get to D4. Oh, but you know what? Could I get a hard copy, Mr. Manager, of that memo that came forward on my, in my, in the desk in advance of that item coming forward?
I'm sure that your liaison can provide you with a hard copy, yes.
All right, at this time, I'm going to ask for item A5, approval of the minutes. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you so much. At this time, we're going to head to consent agenda. This is item B. So I'm going to start with you, Councilwoman Weber. Are there any items you'd like to pull off consent?
No.
No? Okay. Councilwoman Doerr?
There's one item, B15.
B15?
It's about the bees.
All right, good job. All right. Vice Mayor Jarden. All right. Councilman Delgado? Nothing. Councilman Reese? Councilwoman Breckus? B5 and B6, please. Okay. All right, can I get a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda items? I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We do, Madam Mayor, we do have public comment.
Perfect, okay.
Thank you, sorry for the interruption. There is, there is a few members signed in here. First up, we have Barb Fenny, followed by Marciera Gutierrez-Rodriguez.
Perfect. Madam Mayor, I also, I forgot to turn the page, B12 also, please.
Hi, thank you for allowing this presentation. I'm Barb Fenny, the organizer of the Biggest Little Bee City, USA.
I love it.
Which evolved when I was researching my master gardener certification during the COVID pandemic, 2019 to 20. Here's what the buzz is all about. We are a swarm in search of a hive. Our docile worker bees have been helping educate Reno area residents on the Bee City, USA goals since inception. To galvanize and educate the public on pollinators that number more than 1,000 species of native bees in Nevada out of 3,600 in the USA, building habitats, pesticide reduction, and working on continuous projects then to introduce native plants that, once established, need very little water. With the help, dedication, and underwriting of the Help Save the Bees Foundation, we wrote today's proposed resolution for the city of Reno. Matt Brazina, Reno Parks Maintenance, provided footwork to meet the criteria for the city of Reno. While our resolution was approved nationally by science-based Xerxes Society, endorsement of the city of Reno is required for us to join 284 USA affiliates. We are endorsed by the Reno Parks and Recreation Commission. The beauty of the Biggest Little Bee City is that our program enhances and further expands programs already implemented by the city of Reno Recreation and Parks Commission, such as pesticide-free parks, volunteer cleanup, helping plant native species at Rosewood Wetlands. Currently, work is progressing at Valleywood Waterwise Garden. Can we count on your support to our resolution to certify our Biggest Little Bee City and become the next Bee City, USA? Thank you.
I love it. Fantastic. Great job.
Next up, we have Marciera Gutierrez-Rodriguez, followed by Ray Hopper.
Hi, everyone. My name is Marisela Gutierrez-Rodriguez, and I am a first-generation Reno native and UNR alum. I'm here to talk to you about item B19 today for approval. I serve as a finance chair for the Nevada Latino Alumni Chapter. Our mission is to build community through alumni relations, academic support, and most importantly, be an active voice for Latino students far past graduation. The chapter seeks to partner with the university to help aid in its efforts in becoming a Hispanic-serving institution, particularly by helping increase Latino student graduation rates and helping pave a stronger path towards higher education in the community. Can you believe that four years ago, this chapter didn't exist? It was actually considered inactive. We are where we are now, and we are headed in the right direction, all thanks to a few dedicated Latino alumni who recognize the vital need for this chapter. Since its inception, our long-term goal has been to establish a scholarship fund for students in financial need to help them achieve their educational goals. And now, all thanks to Councilmember Oscar Delgado and the city of Reno, we can achieve just that. Your generous donation would go towards helping us establish a scholarship endowment that will change the lives of Latino students for decades to come. On behalf of our board members, members, current and future Latino students, gracias. Gracias for helping us uplift our community.
Great job.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Councilwoman. Madam Mayor, I meant to pull B9, too. Okay, thank you.
Before I call the next person, I do want to say, I neglected to say, anyone on Zoom wishing to speak can raise their hands at this time. Next up in chambers, we have Ray Hopper, followed by Emanuela Heller-McNeilich.
For the record, Ray Hopper, Help Save the Bees Foundation. I'm a Vietnam veteran and founder of Help Save the Bees Foundation. We are the sponsors of the Biggest Little Bee City, USA Committee, and we want Reno to become the next Bee City, USA affiliate. The Bee Informed Partnership tells us that last year, beekeepers nationwide lost 45% of their colonies. Over the past decade, honeybee losses have been 30 to 40% each year, and it hasn't gotten better. But we're not just about honeybees. Bees are the poster child for all pollinators and other insects. We have lots of data about bees because honeybees are the most studied animal in the world besides humans. Bees are like the canary in the coal mine. Researchers tell us that pollinator populations in general have declined 45% over the past 40 years because of habitat destruction, deforestation, fragmentation, urbanization, and agricultural conversion. In other words, it's a side effect of the growth of civilization. Bee City, USA and Bee Campus, USA are twin initiatives driven by the Xerxes Society for Invertebrate Conservation. It's a network of over 290 cities and colleges nationwide, dedicated to pollinator health by improving the abundance of native habitat, reducing the use of toxic pesticides, and promoting public education. Carson City became the first Bee City, USA in Nevada in 2017. Truckee Meadows Community College became the first Bee Campus, USA in Nevada just last month. With the ratification of our proposed resolution, Reno will become the second Bee City, USA in Nevada. By partnering with TMCC and by joining the network of like-minded cities across the country dedicated to mitigating the effects of civilization growth by improving the health of our pollinators, we will help keep the little in the biggest little city in the world. I want to thank the Reno Parks Department for sponsoring our bid to become a Bee City, USA affiliate, and the Recreation and Parks Commission for their unanimous endorsement. Most especially, I want to thank our city liaison, Parks Manager Matt Brazina, for his involvement, guidance, and encouragement throughout the entire process. Please vote to approve our proposed resolution and make Reno a Bee City, USA affiliate. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you so much.
Next up, we have Emanuela Heller-McNeilich.
Hello. For the record, Emanuela Heller-McNeilich. I'm a beekeeper myself. I also speak as the vice president of the Northern Nevada Beekeeping Association. We are a club about between 50 to 100 members, and we repeatedly lose hives of our members, not only to issues like varroa mites, but especially due to the use of pesticides and herbicides. So a honeybee has a radius about, of about two miles, so anything that is sprayed within that radius affects the beehive detrimentally. Chemicals like neonicotinoids can cause central nervous system disturbances in the bees, including paralyze them and lead to their death. So we are very interested in this resolution, and I urge you to uphold it. Thank you. And yes, it is very important that we think about more IPM in the Reno parks and try to reduce pesticides. Thank you.
All right, great job.
The last person signed up to speak, however, Deanne Radcliffe said she did not wish to speak, but was in favor of item B15. I do not see anyone with their hand raised on Zoom at this time. For the record, we received 48 comments in reference to various consent agenda items prior to 4:00 PM on April 26th. These comments were written by our Reno.gov online public comment form or email. Copies have been distributed to the Reno City Council and are available to the public on the Reno.gov meeting portal. Forty-seven were in favor, one in opposition.
All right, thank you so much. So I just want to clarify, because a couple items were pulled after I asked, so I want it on the record, and I want to make sure that the public knows. So items B5, B6, B9, B12, and B15 have been pulled. Okay, so I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're going to start with item B5. I believe I'm going to, Councilwoman Breckus.
Madam Mayor, I apologize. We did have one last-minute hand raise, so if you wouldn't mind, we're going to do one more public comment from Michelle Moore.
Michelle Moore, could you please unmute?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
I'm so sorry. I wasn't prepared for this. I tried to get on my computer, so I'm doing it on my phone, and I'm not used to it, so I apologize. Thank you, Council, for your work. I appreciate you all. Mr. Delgado, thank you, Councilmember, for your donation to us as a Wells Merchants Association. We are an association that does good work in the Ward Three District. We try and do our best for the merchants, and this actually comes at a really good time because we're trying to do an event on the street in June called the Wonders of Wells Treasure Walk, and that money will go towards printing the maps for everybody and getting the pirate booty for the kids that'll be participating. So I really do appreciate it. It's an exciting event for the street, and we're hoping to hold it annually, so hopefully this will be, it's not the inaugural one, but it definitely is coming out of COVID, going to be a big one for us. So I really do appreciate it. And Councilmember Delgado, I hear that you are sporting some really cool shoes that I should see.
Let me see, let's see, Councilwoman. Come on. Usually Doug supports, wears the cool shoes.
I have some shoes on.
You have what?
I have some shoes on.
Let me see. Oh my God, those are so cute. Take your shoe off. Come on, take the shoe off, let me have it. Look at how cute this is. Look at that.
Oh, yeah.
Do you know what that is? That is the Wells banner, and what, the artist, is he still in high school?
Yeah, Reno High School.
He's so talented. Look at this, they had bands created out of the Wells Avenue. What is the back?
The back says Wells Avenue.
Posters. Wells Avenue, it says Wells Avenue. That is so cute. I love those. Those are great.
Thanks, Michelle.
And can you, you can order them, let's just give them a plug, bands.com, am I right?
You have to make them.
Oh, and you have to make them, okay. But they're pretty sassy. How much were they? Okay, anyway. But I love them, they're super cool. Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you all. Have a good day.
You too.
All right, Madam Mayor, we're going to move on to item B5.
All right, thank you. I'm going to send it to, I think, Councilwoman Breckus. I was just looking for a little description and staff report on this item. This is purchasing basically our new system for in here in chambers, and I think also for all the boards and commissions.
Correct. Good morning, Madam Mayor and Council, Ashley Terny, Chief Innovation and Experience Officer. Councilwoman Breckus, you are correct. This is a replacement of our existing systems. The systems that we currently use to create our agenda management right now is over a decade old. The system had been acquired by another company, and they will soon stop supporting the existing system. Council's very aware of the interruptions that we've had in service, how many times we've had to delay the starts of meetings. Additionally, this software will bring all of the boards and commissions' agendas into the same system to help create transparency for the public.
How'd you go about selecting this vendor? Did you do an RFP?
We did not do an RFP, as the provision of NRS doesn't require that for software as a service. We actually started this endeavor with, in conjunction with city manager's office, city clerk's office, and the IT department about four years ago, when the software was actually purchased, the existing one was acquired. We looked over multiple different systems, talked to many of our counterparts up here, down south, and across the nation. So just through a process of demos, reaching out to vendors, and finding what is commonly used across the country.
So you use different, you demoed different systems?
We did.
The question I have is, I've heard a lot of, you know, not favorable reviews on this system we're on right now, Granicus. And I did not know that they were no longer supporting it. I thought maybe, do they have another, a next version, maybe, that we would have to upgrade that could have been a choice?
So IQM2, which is the MinuteTrack platform that we've been on for looking at Jamie Schroder, who helped us launch that 2012? Yes, 2012. So we're a 10-year-old system that was acquired by Acella, which was then acquired by Granicus. Granicus is not supporting that platform, and they want to transition everyone over to their legacy platform.
Okay.
Called Legastar, has had no basic updates in a decade.
So we could have gone with this legacy?
We could have gone with a legacy system that the cost would have been more for less functionality.
Okay. But the reason I ask is, it appears when I did my background independent research on this item, and, you know, these computer systems are always, you know, kind of sleeper items until they're not, is this Prime Gov, Inc., who we're entering into this sole-search contract with, seems to be founded and started by some Granicus people who left that firm. So to me, that was, well, are we getting more of the same that we have not enjoyed? You know, and I just wanted some analysis or discussion, understanding of how you went about it, and that you looked at other products. Did you speak to any users who've used this Prime Gov, Inc.? Because it seems like they don't go back the four years.
So the answer to your question, all of us, the answer is yes. So Prime Gov was started by the person who started Granicus. He left Granicus, sold the company many years back, and identified where the difference is in the gaps that Granicus is not providing in their legacy system and the creation of Prime Gov. So we did talk to current users. The city of Las Vegas uses this as their platform, Boulder City uses this. Additionally, the airport recently launched it on their system as well. So staff feels very confident that they did robust research in ensuring that we're picking the right platform.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just wanted to daylight the process to understand for myself, to cast the vote, and also, you know, to, since we are sole sourcing, it wasn't expanded upon through a competitive, you know, comparison rating of different... you know, comparison rating of different opportunities. So thank you for that. All right. Any further questions from Council? All right. Fantastic job, Ashley. Great job. Thank you so much. With that being said, may I get a motion? I'll move.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Item B-6.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Trina McGoon, Director of Utility Services, for the record.
Can we get a staff report presentation on what this is? This is a pretty new joint powers agreement related to sewer.
Excuse me. Let me fix this a little bit. So this is a memorandum of understanding with Washoe County for those portions of the Daybreak Development that are located within the city of Reno, but sewer...
Can we zoom that out?
Okay, thank you. For those portions of the city of Reno that sewer to the South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, this MOU actually models the previously approved Stonegate MOU. So what it does, it details the developer to design and build off-site sanitary sewer infrastructure to county standards, and the county to own, operate, and maintain that infrastructure. It also details the required permits for maintenance and repair of Washoe County infrastructure within city of Reno right-of-way, and that the developer will pay connection fees, and users will pay user fees to the county for that infrastructure.
Thank you. And will they be paying user... Madam Mayor, may I ask her questions?
You have three minutes.
I have three minutes. Thank you. Your map's a little blurry.
I think they're working on it. Sorry.
So these new Reno residents will be essentially customers to Washoe County for their sewer needs?
Yes, correct.
Just like that model was set up in Stonegate, where they're also going to be customers to Washoe County? And Washoe County is going to run the plant?
Well, they're customers to the South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, which the county does manage and operate.
Okay. And same up in Stonegate, up in Cold Springs. So who's going to maintain the pipes under the ground?
Washoe County.
And is Reno able to do the connection fees?
No, the connection fees also go to the county, because all of that sewerage is flowing to the South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. So all the fees will go to the county for both connection fees and user fees.
And when I pay my sewer fee, and I'm at home, I sewer to Tamwha, I thought some of that money went for stormwater management also.
A portion of Reno's sewer fees does cover our stormwater program.
And will a portion of these people's sewer fees pay for our stormwater program?
No, they will not.
Okay. Well, for those reasons of inequity, what they're paying, also accountability, and I said this up in Stonegate, when the pipes start having problems, when there's issues, they don't have accountability to this city council. They have accountability, or accountability lies with the county commission, and I'm not comfortable having Reno residents, who are our residents, not have... Us having responsibility for their important services. If we had a regional sewer utility, like Tamwha, where we had three seats on the board, I could go there, because then I would know that Reno residents would have some voice and accountability at this table, rather than hoping the county staff will do something, hoping the county commission will respond to their needs on this non-regional service. So for those reasons, and also, the connection fees are without the purview here. They're sent over to the county. I won't be supporting these arrangements that provide Reno residents sewer by county government. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have a follow-up question. Go ahead. Yeah, I just wanted to understand, Trina, so when our stormwater utility comes in and we have our fees, will this fee reduce, and that portion of the fee come to our stormwater system? How does that work?
So if they're paying county fees, it will not impact our stormwater fee. However, these areas located within the city of Reno will pay a stormwater fee.
Okay. So currently, just to be clear, a portion of our current sewer fees goes to stormwater?
Correct.
My understanding is, when you implement the stormwater program, those fees are going to be reduced?
That is one alternative we will bring to this council.
Okay. So assuming that is the way, those would go away, and then the people would pay the separate fee for their proper project?
Correct.
So if you're in Reno. So what you're saying here, though, is for the Daybreak folks, they would pay that sewer... Excuse me, that stormwater fee, whatever it is, across the board?
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Based on, I think you have impervious surface and other considerations that go into the fee?
Yes.
And then in Washoe County, do they have a stormwater program?
Portions of Washoe County has a stormwater program, not in this area. They're up in the North Valleys.
So they would take the entire payment, and they're on a different payment rate than we are? I mean, Washoe County's billing system is different than ours, right?
Yes, and you're talking about sewer now?
Sewer.
Yes.
So their sewer payments, that the folks in Daybreak would pay, those would go to the county to maintain the South Truckee Meadows plant, and also, I assume, the reclaimed water system. Is that correct?
Correct.
So what they do with their fees for sewer is not in our purview, but what they do for stormwater, once we adopt our stormwater, will be within our purview.
Exactly.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because it is a little... It's changing, and it's a little bit complicated, and it hasn't been set in stone yet.
And thank you. I was going to bring that up, that once we... Hopefully, if this body passes the stormwater utility, those would be separate, and we would collect those fees from this area, because they are in the city of Reno.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hey, Trina? Hi. Sorry, we're not going to let you go just yet.
That's okay.
Just yet. Maybe give this council an overview, why you brought this to the council, and why it's important. Wow, that's so loud. Go ahead.
Well, the importance is that we have customers in the city of Reno that are physically... Well, again, that's not up again. Are physically located within Reno's corporate boundaries. However, they drain, and so by way of the infrastructure that connects to the South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, it would be very difficult to pump all of that sewage out and to the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. So the way to do it is, it drains to that plant, and then that plant needs those connection fees and sewer fees to maintain their infrastructure, upsize their infrastructure based on this additional sewage that is flowing there, and then the long-term maintenance. So the importance is to state, and in a memorandum of agreement, of who pays for what, where it goes, and who... You know, what agreements the county needs to ask from the city of Reno to go in and maintain in our streets, so that infrastructure that is located within our streets, the county owns the pipe, we own the road. They have to come to us to ask, can we get in your road to maintain our pipe? So it outlines all of those types of things, so that we don't have confusion when further down the road.
Who's doing what, and why, and all that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted the public to understand why that is so important. So I really... I think you did a great job. Bye, Smear. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm prepared to make a motion, but I want to make a couple of comments first to thank you for the work that you have done on this, Trina, and Mr. Flansburgh, for the work that you have done. I think we could sit here today and point to 15 different agreements and arrangements that we have with different jurisdictions in order to serve and maintain a variety of different infrastructure items, and this is just another in that list. So the housing is certainly something the majority of us are looking forward to bringing online, and I appreciate the detail and the work that you've put in this. So, Madam Mayor, with that, move to approve.
All right. I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor...
May I... Madam Mayor, may I have a comment on the motion? You know, I want to thank staff, too. I think it's really a lack of policy direction that has brought us to a position where I'm not able to support this. One is, you know, irony that, at this point, we don't have a carve-out for stormwater, so any stormwater needs at that point will be paid for by other sewer users from the city of Reno. And irony of irony, it's a construction in the most flood-prone neighborhood, part of town, as we all recall, that being an issue with the Daybreak PUD approval. But more so, it's really governance and equity, for me. And it doesn't matter if it's sewer system, or if it's two-or-four-man fire response. I believe there should be a standard level, if you're in an incorporated city of Reno, and that goes all the way up to who your governance and accountability is. And I'll just go to the example here, is, well, Washoe County will be in our roads. We know when roads get repaired in the neighborhoods. We have a very involved program, and sometimes that means coordination with the utilities. When it's coordinating in the city of Reno, the utility we coordinate with is ourselves, the sewer utility. Now, if Washoe County isn't ready to program those pipes to be fixed, road won't get fixed. We're giving away a different level of service to these folks than the rest of the city has, and I will not see new neighborhoods come on that have different levels of service and equity among other neighborhoods. It's really not a good... Whether it's fire response or here in the sewer, the sewer service. So I won't be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Councilman Reese?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think labeling things that are about equity as equity when they're not is a bad policy. Here, we have an agreement with another entity. There are various agreements that exist, especially as it relates to a broader question about both the sewer utility and stormwater, right? And I think probably in 10 years, perhaps, we'll have a regionalized sewer and stormwater utility, and until that, you know, we have to act, right? And I sort of also deride the concept that somehow we're abandoning city residents to the county, and that they would somehow therefore be unresponsive. I think that is, you know, telling of, you know, the Ward I members' view of how we interact with other bodies. I am proud to serve on the other bodies that I serve in with other colleagues from other entities, whether it be the county or the city of Sparks, and it's through those relationships that we knit ourselves together in the service of the entirety of the community. So imagining ourselves to be in a silo where we just sit in one part of the region and ignore the rest, I think, is very bad policy. I think it also, you know, the Ward I members had 10 years to fix or change that, and nothing. So to sort of sit back and be paralyzed by an activity, I think is disingenuous, and so I'm certainly going to be supporting the MOU. Having read the MOU, it's relatively innocuous. I mean, it is just outlining basic principles. It also, I think, provides some opportunity for some changes that would inevitably occur as we move forward, both in the... Well, I'll say in the North Valleys, but also in the regionalization approach. Also, I think it speaks to the stormwater utility in a way that ultimately... And I think Councilmember Dewar kind of identified it correctly. There are some folks who pay in some systems, and others pay in other systems, and if you believe that we're one region, you hope that all that equals out in the wash, and if it doesn't, you fix it in various check-in points along the way. So I thank you and your staff. Certainly, obviously, this was approved also by the county commission, and so I'm happy to support the body in their direction. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. All right. Okay, we're going to move right along. I think, is this you, Councilwoman Dewar?
Yeah. Thank you. And I see folks coming up, but I wasn't looking for a big present. You can stay up, that's fine. But I really want to... I think it's so important, when we go around town, often we talk to our residents, and we'll hear a section of road is in disrepair. And once it gets to really broken, it's very expensive to fix. And so I just wanted to take a moment to identify how important this preventative maintenance project is to keeping our roads in good condition. I mean, preventative maintenance is sort of key on any kind of infrastructure, whether it's the roof on this building, you know, our parking garage, your own house. Sometimes we don't have the funds. Sometimes we don't have the time. Sometimes we don't have the energy and interest. But when we do, when it all comes together, when people like you, our staff, recognize how important preventative maintenance is to extend the life of something that we've spent millions of dollars building, I just want to congratulate you for doing this. It is a $3 million item, and I want to make sure that our Reno residents know that we are investing heavily in maintaining things that we've spent dearly for. So it's really just a thank you. We don't need a big discussion at all about it, but I just, you know, it's rare that you get recognition for doing the basics, but it's very important to maintain that life. So thank you, Madam Mayor. And with that, I don't know if anyone else has a comment, but I would make a motion.
I would like to comment. Thank you so much for explaining that and sharing, because it is a great deal. It's very much needed, and thanks the staff for all the work to get it done, and I'm thankful for this program as well.
Yeah. All right. Great. All right.
So I'll make a motion to approve item B-9.
All right. Thank you. I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, good job.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move right along to item B-12.
Yeah. This is not unlike what we had a couple weeks ago out in Verde, where the city facilitated some private property interests to, I guess, do some railroad work.
Mike, Michelle, engineering manager. Yeah, a couple council meetings ago, we did something very similar to what we're doing today.
Yeah. Why did we decide to do this?
Well, we're doing it because Moya Boulevard is our road. This acre crossing is going to be ours. We're doing this to facilitate development. We're doing this to diversify our economy. We're doing this for jobs. We're doing this for all the right reasons.
Well, thank you. I have a lot of railroad crossings in Ward I that have needed attention for a while, so I'm wondering why these stand against those. But can you show a map up and show me exactly what's going on here?
Trying to get the cursor to work here. So right here, where my cursor is, is the intersection of Moya and Echo. And right here is the southern portion of the airport property for which the developer is wishing to put two large warehouse buildings on. Right here is that same intersection of Moya and Echo that I talked about. Here is existing Moya. You go north, and it curves into Industry Circle. So what's happening here is Moya...
Oops.
Moya is being extended right here, and here's the railroad crossing, and here is that southern portion of the airport for which the developer wishes to develop.
And this is just us using our local government powers and our special relationship with the railroad company to let them, though, do the road expansion, correct? The road improvements?
Well, Union Pacific will only deal with a public entity, so...
And you showed a subject site, and I can't recall, it's been some time. How much more land is proposed to be using this roadway?
Well, I think the plan is... Well, remember, the Reno Stead Airport is actually owned by the Reno Tahoe Airport Authority, and they have been in the process of working with the FAA on freeing up, I think, 2,600 acres.
Ah.
So the plan in time is to extend Moya all the way up to where Lemon will be extended out to Red Rock.
Okay.
And that's about two and a half miles, so...
And have you, like, this little extension to Moya and chasing it all the way down to where it hits 395, have you, based upon that, have any projections of trips and truck trips and that sort of thing with this complete build-out? Do you have a traffic study on that?
I think RTC does. I, I think, I, I think RTC does. I, I don't know what those numbers are.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Do any other councilmembers have any questions or comments? Okay, to the councilmember who's warded in, would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to approve.
Approve.
I'd like to approve.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
May I comment on the motion? By my calculation, this is the most remote warehousing from an interstate, or 395, a highway. It's going to contribute considerable traffic generation along the course, both ways where it goes. I don't know where it is in the rest of the permitting, but I cannot use our discretionary authorities to deal with the railroad on behalf of a plan that we haven't looked comprehensively here. I wish the mayor was here, too, because I'd be interested in her insights. I think she's our airport liaison. But, you know, we are creating a lot of issues with these truck traffics and the facilitation of warehousing, and this one is taking it way far off our main stem roadways. The one a couple of weeks ago is taking down a flank of a mountain on Peavine, but it's close to the interstate. Here, we've got a lot more that's very far off of the 395. And I think we should hold until we understand the full complexion of what this railroad crossing will be doing to truck traffic and land use up in the North Valleys. So, I won't support it. I'd like to send staff back to the drawing board to come forward with a full proposal about the Tahoe Airport industrial development, which could, by my calculations, because I've been look, I read the industrial lands use analysis report from 2013 from the Truckee Meadows, that acreage he's talking about could be the size of everything that's been built since 2015 in the North Valleys. That's how massive it is, to my understanding. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, I believe we're at item B15. Councilwoman Dewar.
Yeah, thank you. And I was wondering if the bee supporters could come up, and with Matt, maybe Matt? That would be awesome.
Be awesome.
Yeah. I just wanted, I did not sponsor this item.
Don't be shy.
I believe our City Parks Department sponsored this item. I did not sponsor this item. But I wanted to give a shout out and kudos. Ms. Fenny has contacted me a number of times in advocacy for bees. And I just wanted to share a personal experience. I think most of you know I enjoy gardening. And about a year ago, I began having bee hives on my property. And it's done in an interesting way that I think this city should think about. So, we started midsummer, and now, we're just starting the season. But they told me that I have, as of this week, 100 pounds of honey in my, in my hives. And I only have two, two hives with three boxes. I had only two boxes. They just added a third. There was a swarm. They captured the swarm. A swarm is when it gets a little crowded in the condo. And the queen bee heads off with some of the bees to go find a new home. And usually, they'll set up in a, a tree or something, that kind of area. But if you can capture the swarm, which my beekeepers came out and did, they, they knocked the tree, the bees fell down, they captured them and set up a new colony. And what I wanted to do in celebration and recognition of you coming to us today is, I have my very first production of honey. And I bottled it for the council, our park staff, and I wanted to give one out. So, if you could just pause the clock for a moment, I would like to. So, I've tasted some, it tastes good, but this is my very first production.
That's so cool. I love it.
Doer Gardens.
Greenfield Gardens, but I like Dewar Gardens. How sweet it is. There you go. And I hope it's good. I, I hope to produce more. They told me over the summer we'll produce about 200 pounds. And the way it works, and this is what I want to propose for the city, because none of us are pros, and this is definitely a side job for me, I'm not, I don't even manage the bees, and that's what I want to talk about. I don't know that there's anyone out the city that is a bee expert. But the way it works at my house is that there are beekeepers in our region, they're look for places to put the bees, and then they take care of the bees. To your point, the, the bee mites, any kind of cleaning, the harvesting of the honey, the cleaning of the honey, even the bottling of the honey. I did not bottle this. They poured my honey into the bottles. I did label it. I did that part. But, and then they give me 10%. So, it's like a, a share or a tit of the bees. And I think that this could work for the city. In other words, reduce our involvement, but have a benefit. We could harvest the honey, we could give it to our employees, we could give it to a nonprofit, we could do a lot of things with it. But it would be a way to get into this activity without, you know, making somebody at the city an expert about bees. Now, unfortunately, my beekeeper team is departing. They, they've accepted another job in another state, so I'll be transitioning to another beekeeping team to keep my hives going. But I wanted to just get a, a little bit of comment from you, if you're familiar with this process, you know, and, and how that might work. And really, when we're a bee city, what, what does it mean? You know, like, I don't think that we really got the import of what that means to you or to Matt, whoever would like to address it.
I'll take that one. So, becoming a bee city is joining a network of 150 some odd, 153, I think it is now, cities across the country that are affiliates of the Bee City USA Network. And all these communities have developed a, a plan, a.
So, are you expecting us to do a plan?
We, the city of Reno and in, 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 in the person of Matt Brazina, I believe, has, will be partnering with our organization to develop plans and projects to improve pollinator habitat throughout the city.
Okay. So, the reason I'm asking this is, we're also a tree city. And there are certain requirements to be a tree city. And one of the requirements is that we spend, as I recall, $2 for every resident to be a member of the Arbor Day Foundation and to be recognized as a bee city, excuse me, a tree city. And that for our, let's just say, 350,000 residents is about, as I recall, $70,000, something like that. So, we, we have to spend a certain amount of money to maintain this. And I wondered if there's something similar in the bee world.
I see what you're getting at. There are specific requirements from the Xerxes Society for membership, including at least one public activity that promotes pollinator habitat. Signage within the city that shows that we are a member of the Bee City USA and a $500 annual fee. Based on city's population. Over 100,000 is $500.
And let me just ask Matt, oh, I'm sorry.
Our, our foundation, Help Save the Bees Foundation, has committed to providing that annual fee.
Okay. And let me just ask Matt, what does it mean to the city? Do we, are we undertaking any activities?
I think it allows, for the record, Matt Brazina, City of Reno Parks Manager. I think this partnership allows us to expand upon our planter beds, our park system, and really show the community that, you know, we're, we're environmental stewards and we're doing everything that we can to be sustainable and.
All right. Well, one final thought I had for you, and, and this is really something that Mayor Chivin and I shared, is that back about six years ago, we adopted 12 pesticide-free parks. That's about 15% of our 88 parks, little less. It's about 13%. And we haven't done no more in the six years. We've been experimenting, and it's been a pilot, and we were short on funds. But I was wondering if we could, you know, at some point in the future, you know, maybe a year from now, half a year from now, whenever, look at potentially designated some more parks, you know, to join the, this 12. We designated two in each ward. Maybe we make it three in each ward. It was just some thoughts for you, Matt, as we move forward with this initiative.
And that's definitely something that we can look into, as well as designating some of these planter beds that we've been converting into pollinator gardens as pesticide-free beds.
That'd be amazing. Okay, well, thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're doing a really good job. I'm really proud of you. I love the sustainability initiatives you're taking on. I think they're very much more now than ever. So needed, so needed. I just wanted to recognize you, because, I mean, you guys don't hear it, but fantastic job you're doing. I love them. And I think to Councilwoman Dewar's point, that was a really big sticking point for us. So, we've really got to try to do whatever we can to get there. And I know it's important to you, too, but I wanted you to know because I love how you're really taking an approach on sustainability and really focusing on it. So, bring whatever you can to the council, because I think, like I said, these kinds of initiatives are really important. Good job.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Reese, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And of course, I think this agenda item has created a lot of buzz, right? And so, the question is to bee or not to bee? Ultimately.
Well, that's very bee coming.
I mean, I am not misbehaving, but I, I guess ultimately, I'm pretty excited because I think it is an element of sustainability and also something that, it, it occurs in various different ways, right? It touches on our sustainability project, but also about our push for community gardens as it relates to food security. I mean, it just has the, I mean, there are medicinal points to be, to honey, especially for those with allergies. So, there's just a lot that this touches on that it's just, just below the surface. And so, I'm excited about some of the demonstration garden work that's being done, both in our City Hall Plaza as well as the West Second Street Plaza. When we were touring the North Valleys last week, I had thought maybe Dorothy McElindon Park, Councilmember Weber and Councilmember Delgado and I were all out there would be a great place to have bee hives. I mean, I just think there are, we're just started scratching the surface at what could possibly be. And so, I, I'm excited. I think this is the first step, right? It's, it's something where we can take it and build upon it. And for my part, and we'll take this up offline, but I'd like to pay out of the council-directed funds for that $500 fee, out of our council-directed funds that we have, so that we can make sure that we meet the requirements of the Bee City USA affiliation. And so, we'll work on that offline. But I just think it's a great opportunity. You know, bee species, there's just a lot going on in our globe about bees and the importance that they play in the food chain. You know, if you read some of the scientific literature, the loss of bees and bee habitats is really potentially devastating and, and could potentially, you know, collapse the food system. And so, there are just some things about it that I think this gives us the opportunity to spotlight, and you're doing a great job of that. I think the mayor said it well. And so, I congratulate you on the effort. So, congratulations and, you know, we'll go out and do cool things.
One thing I do want to bring up, maybe you remember, and you probably remember, is that we did a bee initiative with Sandy Rowley.
Exactly.
Do you remember?
Mm-hmm. Well, there were two things.
We did pass a resolution. I remember that. So, does some of that, and I don't know, Jamie, if you remember, sort of overlap in some of that initiative with the resolution?
Hello, for the record, Jamie Schroeder, Director of Parks and Rec. So, yes, so that was connected to, if I recall correctly, the pesticide-free park program. Sandy was sort of the, the member of the public that brought that idea to the Parks Department back then. And so, as Matt had discussed with Councilmember Dewar or Jarden's question about can we expand the pesticide-free parks, you know, that it was an initial pilot program, it's been going well. The trade-off is, of course, it does require a lot more manual labor, so we just have to be mindful of that. So, I love Matt's idea about, let's focus on some pollinator gardens first that will, one, attract our friends, pollinator friends, but also be less maintenance so that we can strike that, that balance as we continue to try to expand what we can do.
I just wanted to remind everyone that we kind of have been looking at this.
Well, and there was a second one, just if you remember. We had a group of children come in and ask if we could actually put some bees on the roof. And, and that's something that we may want to consider, you know, they're out of harm's way to the public. We may, to Councilmember Reese's point, want to set up sort of a fenced-in area where people can see the bees, but they don't come up to the hives. And those are potentially maintained by a third party. So, there's so many ways to do this, to get the points across.
All right, great. Madam Mayor. All right. You want to give us a motion?
May I speak on this issue?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I just, I want to inquire a little bit more about how we're going to integrate it into our operations, lots about spots. And I'll just give a real example, is yesterday, I was out in southwest Reno, the foothill area, and the fire department has a grant, and they've done some, you know, mitigation of fuels. And there's some issues the residents have out there about that, and they're in touch with the manager. But a big question for them is they understand a pre-emergent's going to come soon, and they were asking me about what pre-emergent would be used, because when we're sitting on his backyard, his hives were right there. And so, I just want to know if you're going to work with other departments when they're out doing work that impacts pollinators? Because the, the demonstration projects are great, but I hear from the beekeepers that I know that they're so spread out, they really do need to have the confidence that things that are going on, whether it's development nearby or, you know, some of our own work, is going to be protective of their efforts. Are you going to work with other departments and talk about, you know, pre-emergents and what they should and shouldn't use?
Absolutely. For the record, Matt Brazina, Parks Manager. Although, it will take a lot of work to get in touch with, with all the organizations that are doing restorations in the area. It's, that's a, a great talking point and something that we will initiate.
Yeah, yeah, great. Especially with our departments, right?
Correct.
Yeah. On city line. Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, just one final comment, if I may, and I'm sorry. I wanted to just highlight the work that John Flansburgh's team has done, because I think Councilwoman Breckus makes a good point. We have 88 parks, but we have many, many, many miles of roadway. And often, the roadway is what is sprayed, or there will be a drainage area, and the entire drainage area is sprayed. Mr. Flansburgh's department put together an entire manual on how to do this better. And I didn't know, John, if you just wanted to speak to it, but I mean, it's an ongoing effort, to my knowledge, of reducing the spraying everywhere in our city, not just in our parks.
Thank you for that. For the record, John Flansburgh, Director of Public Works. So, we have been working collaboratively with the U.S. Department of Ag with our consultant on these large areas and, and have developed the first-in-the-state vegetation management manual. And as you stated, we are still holding meetings with them. And I just want to highlight Ryan Byrd and, and his good work as the lead on that project.
And my understanding is that you, instead of spraying, were doing some mowing, that you bought a different kind of mower, that you were doing hand spraying by hand instead of by truck, so it was more targeted? Because we've had complaints about overspray from nearby residents to Councilwoman Breckus's point. And whether it's for bees or for anything, they're upset. And then, we also talked about having a map that shows where our people that are spraying are spraying, so that people that are concerned about this can actually know. And I don't know if you've taken that any further, or their announcements, or.
Yeah. So, we, we locate on our website where we are spraying during those times when we can spray. Of course, we've always recorded, you know, wind speeds and all those things that are, that go with that. But it's definitely a, there are best management practices depending on the type of work and where you're at.
Yeah. So, thank you for putting that vegetation management manual together. I think you said it was a first in the state. So, that's pretty incredible. So, I think we're moving out on a couple of fronts. We can, we, we have a lot of work to do. So, thank you, everyone. And Madam Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, please do.
Yes, please. I would like to approve item B15, the resolution designating the city of Reno as a Bee City USA affiliate within the Xerxes, Xerxes Society Bee City USA and Bee Campus USA Network of Organizations.
All right. So, I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Good job.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Give me some feedback on the honey, too.
Love it.
I might have to plant some different flowers to make it taste different. I don't know.
Madam Mayor, if I'm not mistaken, and my math's right, I think that moves us on to item C1?
It sure does. Okay, thank you so much. So, we are now going to open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, was proper notice given? Any correspondence received at this time?
Proper notice was given, and we do not have any correspondence at this time.
Okay. That being said, I'm going to do, send it to you, Mr. Hall? Nope, we're good? Okay. All right, come on up. Come on down.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. For the record, Vicki Van Buren, interim finance director. Before you, you have a public hearing for, on the city's proposed general obligation, various purpose bonds to be issued in order to finance a portion of the Public Safety Center and the Aquatic Center at Moana Springs and the preliminary work design on the Fire Department Headquarters. This public hearing is a statutory requirement required by NRS as one of the steps in the process of issuing the bonds. And as such, we do not have a recommended motion for this. We just ask that council hold the public hearing and then note any public comments on the record. And just as a, as a timeline for our council here, I just wanted to give you an idea of the upcoming items for this, following this public hearing. What would be next on this bond would be. What would be next on this bond would be the first reading of the bond ordinance, which is scheduled to come to council on May 11th. And then on May 25th, we have adoption of the bond ordinance, which is scheduled to come to council on this item.
All right.
Motion to approve?
Any questions before we do that? Any questions? No? Okay, I have a motion from Councilwoman Dorr. I have a second from Councilwoman Weber.
Could we have a comment? Go ahead. I would really, really ask the council to take a hard look at this. And I'll tell you, I was here as staff when the city got into the auction rate securities on refinancing of the trench, and then came into council on the, you know, fallout of that. And it's interesting timing to be going through this when we're also doing budget, because there's an opportunity to look at this current year and, and how this plugs into the rest of the budget. But I would really encourage the council, if nothing else, to just have them pencil how we can redo these projects with the ARPA money that we have. Not the, not that which we've already, you know, allocated, but that which was coming forward. That money is going to last for a decade. It's very, it's going to be tough to spend it. Why not spend it on a project you already have in the queue? There's talk in DC about yanking back some of that money. Why not be a rock star of a city council and plug it right into something you have? And take a forward look on our organization's sustainability fiscally for those who come beyond us, and our ability in these volatile times to preserve the workforce that we have. I am really encouraging the council to ask our finance department to put a pencil on how to do these projects without doing this bond with the ARPA money. It is, in my mind, beyond the pale to not be considering it this way. It is fiscal negligence. We have a gift horse, we should do it this way. I absolutely stand by that. I've had discussions with Ms. Van Buren about, and her predecessor, about how to use that money to pay it now with the ARPA funds. It's a great approach to go forward. And I also want to say, you know, we're, we're in very volatile times. We, we were told a while ago that they could call back the last debt that came forward, you know, the fire apparatus. Now they can't. So that's going to stay around as debt, too, unfortunately. Also, and the last point I'll make, is we're moving into a very typical world in the bond markets. They, they have estimated these at 5%, which is pretty high. It's like the highest it's been in decades. So they have room in there. But when they were packaging this initially, they were at 2%, and they're moving up toward 5%. It's curious. So I'm just, I'm really asking the council to, you can take the motion, but ask them to show you a second track to do this without issuing general obligation debt that will be sitting with this jurisdiction for, what is it, 20 years?
30.
30 years.
30 years. Don't do that further out to our employees and to the other electeds. Be responsible today with the money that we have from Washington. Thank you.
Yeah. Madam Mayor. All right, go ahead, Councilwoman Dorr.
Yeah, I just, since I made the motion, I wanted to speak to the motion and why I did make the motion. We've, we have taken a very hard look at this, and I want to point out to the council in case, we've been working on this for a few years. So just some things to think about and that we've reviewed at the Debt Management Commission, where I'm chair. We got a $9 million grant from the Pennington Foundation for the Moana Pool, and we were able to match that with general obligation funds in-house. So we are using in-funds, funds in-house, general obligation, sorry, general funds, what am I trying to say? General funds?
Yes.
Dollars, to match that grant. That was for the pool. Additionally, we have a pledge of a quarter million dollars from the Atlantis, which will also get matched with general funds that we have in-house. Additionally, we received a $5 million Pennington grant for the Public Safety Center, which is critically needed. We know that we have police officers sitting in jails to this day, can't run wires into the building and do current policing. So I think that we have gathered almost $20 million, in fact, almost $25 million, to pay towards these projects with cash today in hand. And I think it's very appropriate to go into the bond market and access lower-interest funds that are available to do these kind of very important public service-type projects. Last time I asked, could we prepay the debt? And my understanding was after 10 years?
Correct.
We can prepay the debt, and we do not have to continue paying any interest, depending on how much we prepay. And I talked to our city manager and asked, and he said, to my understanding, that where you had an opportunity, you were putting funds aside so we could, at that 10-year mark, pay for things that we need to pay for, a savings account, if you will. So I, I feel very comfortable with the way that the city's managing this. I, I don't know about the pro forma and what interest rate we'll ultimately get. I was told that it would be around 3%. I don't know where we stand today. 5% is a current, let's call it retail mortgage market, but I don't know for city public obligation funds where that number sits today. Do you know that answer?
We, that has not been finalized yet. We are working on that right now.
Okay. Do you have even an approximation, though?
No, we still have our estimates based on the 5% right now.
Okay. Because what I remember at debt management was we picked 5% so that, that we would, 90% chance come in less than that. So we wanted to be very conservative at debt management. So I just wanted to thank you for your work. I don't like to go in debt any more than anyone else does, but these are big projects that require big dollars. The sooner we pay them off, the better it will be for everyone. So thank you.
Sergeant Jordan?
Thank you very much. I, I do think it's important to kind of get on the record this, the comments of that somehow doing this is fiscally irresponsible, which is wholly inaccurate, as the experts and those that have been studying this and evaluating what's before us. So I, I think it's important that we speak up to clarify the record that this is absolutely the prudent thing and the right thing to do. I think the irresponsibility lies in not providing our community appropriate facilities to operate our public safety out of, or to not provide them adequate recreational facilities like the aquatic pool. And this other notion that somehow doing this is going to, or is at the expense of our personnel, I think we will see in our upcoming budget that we are adding more people than we ever have historically. So I just wanted to quell that notion that somehow this is fiscally irresponsible. It absolutely is not. It is in the best interests of our community. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Reese?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My comments will be brief, because we've had these conversations for the last year, it seems. Councilmember Breckus continues to use sort of hyperbole and rhetoric to drive a conversation, which I think is unfortunate. It's not negligence. Negligence is a tort concept. It's malfeasance. Malfeasance is when a public official commits wrongdoing. And I think it's wrong, what Ward 1 member is saying, and so it's not negligent on our part, but it's malfeasance. Pay-go as a system is appropriate under certain economic conditions, and Ms. Van Buren, you and I have talked about that from this dais. But it's also an issue of inequality, a concept that Ms. Breckus likes, likes to use loosely, where you have current folks paying the freight for something that will be used over 30 years. And that kind of generational inequality is really what often paralyzes communities from acting. And so I think it is appropriate that everyone who benefits from these resources at the Public Safety Center, the pool, the fire department, pay for those over a period of time that is commensurate with essentially their use, rather than saying everyone today will pay for it. I think it's also very sad and telling, because, you know, the ARPA dollars are a once-in-a-lifetime commitment by the federal government to this community. And with those dollars, we've made prioritizations about things like housing, sheltering, food scarcity issues, mental health. And so as you're prioritizing all those things, we all wish we had more money for everything. But if we don't take the bold step that is required by leadership at this time, I think we will be doing a disservice to the community who has asked us to support things like housing. They've asked us to support things like public safety centers and the pool. So saying I'm a fan of it, but I don't want to pay for it that way, is really just an excuse to not act, and that is the malfeasance.
All right. So I had a motion, I had a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Madam Mayor, if I'm not mistaken, that takes us to item D-1.
Thank you so much. Okay, so we're going to move on to item D-1. This is Public Works. At this time, we will have a council presentation.
We were just getting that pulled up. Just bear with us for one moment.
Good morning, Kurt Dietrich, City Traffician, here for the record. Before council is a proposal to name an unnamed valley to Midtown Alley. So the current mechanism for street naming comes before council is through the Regional Street Naming Committee. So this particular committee is formed by interlocal agreement between the cities of Reno Sparks and an incorporated Washoe County. They provide street naming standards and avoids duplication of street names within the region, similar sounding names as well as direct duplication. So the body of the Street Naming Committee is formed with representatives from building departments, emergency services, mail services, utilities, and others, and to make sure that everybody is on the same page. And through interlocal agreement, this recommending body is a recommending body to the Reno City So here is a map, a location map of the alley. As you can see, the alley is in the center, and that is surrounded by St. Lawrence, Reno, Humboldt, and Plumas Streets. And as you can see along the alley, there's actually five properties that directly access the alley. So the applicant who brought this forward to the Regional Street Naming Committee currently owns three of the five properties that are along the alley there. And with that, the Regional Street Naming Committee voted unanimously to approve. So here are four examples of properties that actually front the alley. As you can see, their entrances are directly on the alley. So that presents some problems with postal service and package deliveries, because currently their addresses are referenced off the adjacent Main Street. So with that, we performed outreach to the Ward 1 NAB. That was an informational item that was brought before April 11th. And so there was a couple suggestions that came out of that, that particular informational item. One is to extend the naming limits to the entire alley alignment, which is currently nine blocks from California to Mount Rose Street. And also the suggestion to name alley, the alley Creamery Alley, in consideration of historical context for that particular area. If there's any changes, staff recommends that these changes be brought before, back to the Regional Street Naming Committee to vet out any potential conflicts. And so with that, staff recommendation is to move forward with the resolution, naming the unnamed alley to Midtown Alley. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Madam Mayor?
So there are issue, a little bit of issues with this, and I guess the, the first one is, any member of the public can go and ask to this committee to rename something under the way it's, it works, and they can go and do it without anyone on this body, or anyone in the community knowing that it's going on. And that's what happened in this instance. And, and let me just say, naming alleys is, is, is a good thing. We only have a few that are named downtown, Fulton and one other. And my liaison, Nick Chikoni, did a lot of good work showing that cities that are getting infill do go back with protocols and processes of naming alleys because of these issues of, you know, a lot more alley houses, and also just the nature of the world with delivery trucks for e-commerce versus, you know, the postal service. So it is a good thing, and I think this person was proactive in asking for it. Unfortunately, when he went to the naming committee, I think the first idea was Mount Rose Alley. And they had problems with that, because we have Mount Rose Highway and we have Mount Rose Street. And that's what the naming committee is, basically to put the addresses, you're in the 6,000 block, odds and evens on one side, and those conflicts. But not so much looking at it from the perspective of placemaking, and that's, and history, and that's, that's our job. And that's why, you know, the other issue is that naming policy that is in draft form and hasn't come before that, this body. So there was discussion at the neighborhood Ward 1 meeting, because this was on the agenda before. And then I get, talked about it with the Historic Resources Commission in my update to them last week, because one of their number-one priorities is the adoption of the renaming policy. So just to let the council know, is this concept of Midtown Alley is objectional because this isn't in Midtown. So the Ward 1 Neighborhood Advisory Board has been working on a map of every neighborhood having a name for the last eight years, and this is in the Plumas neighborhood. And the history of that is that years ago, and it's still an effective document, the city had the Plumas Neighborhood Plan, and this is right in the middle of the Plumas Neighborhood Plan. And so the confusion of putting an alley that is much more to the west and calling it Midtown Alley, and this alley's going to have to end up ultimately being the whole configuration of the alley, where some of these people haven't even been told their alley's going to get named yet, just this one segment. Because the person went through the process and tried to name just his alley, whereas, you know, the policy should be the whole alley, and under the naming conventions, you cannot, you cannot change the name of an alley that's going nine blocks to three different names. That would be very problematic to everyone involved, emergency responders and so on. But the, the problem is that it, it puts it with this place name that it isn't acknowledged to be, both under our city planning policies and the operations of the neighborhood group that we have. So what, and in keeping with that naming policy draft that the Historic Resources Commission is very focused upon, there was on this block a very interesting property at one time. Do you have that, do you have that image that was in the presentation materials? Yeah. And there was a creamery there, and all the Mount Rose history that's been done about the school, there was a relationship of this creamery to the school and the kids. And so what I would propose, and I will, can work as the applicant, to go back and ask the Street Renaming Committee to rename it Old Creamery Alley. And then, after that's adopted, go through the entire process of renaming the entire alley. And then hopefully, at that time, the council has adopted the naming policy. And the naming policy essentially says, when we're going to name or rename something, we're going to consider it, you know, input from the different groups, Historic Resources Commission, Human Resources, Human Rights Commission, the NABS, and so on. And we're going to look at different conventions, significance, place naming and all. So the recommendation that I'm making is that we direct, you know, staff or, you know, acknowledge that this will go back to the, or not, not, maybe if we're not advertised, not do it right now, but not do anything on it, and then I will get on the next committee for the Street Naming Committee. Because at this point, you have someone who's a school district person or an AT&amp;T official having more role in naming an alley.
Well, what's wrong with that? Sounds like they went to and did the right process.
Counselmember.
Didn't they do the right process?
Well, they did, and, and the...
Okay, so that's all I want to know.
Yeah, but the...
Your time is up. Hold on. Councilman Reese, go right ahead.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Mr. Dietrich, perhaps just some background for me, because I don't know a lot about what the Ward 1 member is talking about. So this process involved one of the residential owners along that area. You said they owned three of the five properties that accessed the alley directly. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Three of the five properties, and he was having some issues with mail delivery. So he had two suggestions for names. One is Midtown Alley and then Mount Rose Alley. As Councilmember Breckus mentioned, we had two Mount Roses, Mount Rose Highway, Mount Rose Streets, so that was vetted out, leaving Midtown Alley.
Okay. And so then perhaps the question is then directed best to the city manager, Mr. Thornley. I, I guess normally I would say the late-breaking nature of the information being provided is reason for me to pause. But, but generally speaking, I also believe that the process... But, but generally speaking, I also believe that the process, you know, might have played out differently had, you know, some other people been involved. I'm not saying that I wanna wait for the HRC, the Parks people, the street, all these other groups who are somewhere out there chewing on this issue, because we had this come up a council meeting or two ago about renaming's. And so I, I guess I'm asking for direction from the manager's office, perhaps about how this arrived at the agenda sort of now, whether it's timely or fully baked. If it's not, I'm happy to push it out, but I'm not inclined to go into 47 other meetings about it either. And so I'm, I'm sort of lost and would like some input from the City Manager's Office.
Of course, thank you for the opportunity. I'd sort of start in answering your question by saying that I believe the Public Works staff and the traffic engineering folks, of course, do a remarkable job with, with all of their functions. This is one where we could stand to have probably a little bit better intake procedure so that we could avoid the issue that is, is in front of the body now, right? Which is an applicant who has made perhaps what I would describe as an incomplete application, and, and not in a pejorative way, and not in a way that necessarily precludes action on it, but perhaps has not extended the length of, of the alley. And so it's not that it isn't baked, right? Because it has gone through the process, and if you wanted to name this segment of the alley, Midtown Alley, you could do that today, and you could do that today, having followed the process that's in place. If you do not believe that it is the best policy to name segments, it should go back for more work.
Yeah, and so I, I appreciate that. I, I think the one thing I will say in leaving this conversation, because it sounds like we can probably decide as a body to take it up again, is that my expectation as the at-large member is that if a ward member has a particular agenda item on their calendar, and it's needing some work that I can add to the conversation, or we can make sure it's fully baked, that that council member would reach out, and we would have those conversations, not at the dais, because I think that that is where many of us are left without enough information. And processing it from the ward member in the fashion it is makes for bad policy. So I would invite all of my colleagues, and I, I believe with the exception of one, my colleagues do make those calls and do work on those things as a city. That, that really is why we're in the position we're in today, where we're hearing things that kind of sound off, but not entirely able to connect the dots, because the work has not been done by the ward member to get us to that point.
Yes, okay, Councilman Dur.
Yeah, thank you, and I support both of my colleagues' comments. I think that this, there's, there's not, it's, it's not a huge rush. It should be done well. Streets names last for a very long time. Even in the back of my mind, I have, I wonder if there's even a better alley that could be named Midtown Alley that might be even more appropriate, you know, even on the, on the east side. I don't know those, those answers, but I know that once this name's taken, it's taken, and it's not available for others. So I'd love to have this vetted, and, and Mr. Manager, maybe, you know, you had also pulled off item D2, which was also a street naming, because you wanted to do a little more work on that too. I love the idea of extending the length of the alley with one unified name. I love the idea of at least one visit. I don't know, we need, like Councilman Reese said, 60 visits, but I think we could use a visit with our Historic Resources Commission. And also the process, if you, if someone wants to rename an anything, maybe that is a public process, because lots of people care. You know, it affects lots and lots of homeowners, businesses, and et cetera. So I would support the direction both of my colleagues are going. And just, you know, take no action on this today and give you some direction to do a little bit more work.
And I think that would be helpful if Councilwoman Breckis would come back, and have you spoken to the applicant?
Yes, I have, yes, I have.
Clearly, they did the right process.
Yes, he did, just like-
So I want to make sure that everyone knows that, that he followed the right procedure.
Yes, he did, just like President Sandoval a couple months ago, as you recall. But, and I have represented to him that I will work to name his portion expeditiously. But I wanna tell you, this comment about, well, Councilmember Breckis, you didn't talk or whatever, I go to the HRC where, you know, and if you look, I, I sent it on. It's, it's an attachment to this, and, and it's a memo on October of 2021 from Claudia Hansen, you know, to, to the City Manager and others about the draft policy related to naming and renaming of city of Reno facilities. And, and it references some meetings and efforts that went on in August of 20. So I go there to the HRC, who has adopted a strategic plan, sent letters asking for this renaming policy to go, and they're kind of mad at me. Why hasn't this come before the agenda, Councilmember Breckis? Why, why isn't this on the agenda? And then I go here, and I'm told, oh, you, you all need to, you need to work on, you know, your issues. It's like, I'm kinda getting it on both sides, and the HRC feels very strongly about this. So if you do think that we need to do some work, I would ask you to read this attachment. I had it put in. And maybe have this set up in advance of any more coming through the door. Because there's actually another one pending right now on another street in the old southwest Reno of two rename, of an existing name that is historic significance and has some of its champions, and then some other folks who want to name it after another name of historic significance, and has its champions, and then has someone who just has, you know, checks from the bank who wants to stay where she is. So I, I, I think that if we take no action, that's fine. I will follow through, because I think this person did work in good faith. He doesn't really care about the name, and then move forward on the rest of the alley, because the rest of the alley does need some public vetting. So that's what I will do. So I appreciate it, and I, if any of you have any questions about this renaming policy, let me know. It was a bunch of different committees, some of which your liaisons too. For some reason, the HRC committee is the one that is very focused on it and keeps putting it on their agenda and expects something from the council on it. Thank you.
All right, give me a motion, Councilwoman Breckis. And we're gonna support you here.
I just think we'll move on. No motion. We'll move on.
So, Mr. Manager, is that what you wanna do? What's, what's best?
I think that's the best course of action here today, is to take no action on this item.
Okay.
It's on the agenda, because that's where we were in the, in the process that was followed. But we did need the direction from the council to-
Yeah, so it's a lot of luck, like D2.
Councilwoman Breckis, when you get everything worked out, just bring it back and make sure that we are kept up to speed on what you're doing.
Yeah, my intent is to be, now be the applicant to rename it that Old Creamery, and then bring it back here, and then be the applicant for the other sections too.
Okay, let's move on. Thank you. All right, I'm sending it back to you, Madam, Mr. Clerk.
I believe our next item, since D2 was pulled earlier, is gonna be item D3.
All right, Ward 4, Staff Presentation Discussion. You are back, my friend.
I am back, thank you.
Good job.
Very tough.
This is directed on One Water Nevada Advanced Purified Water Facility at the American Flat Project to include a project status update and next steps. First place.
What is that? For, I'm so sorry, the first place, what is that?
Well, we're first place.
Oh.
Wait, wait till, wait.
Wait. You don't know? We're so excited.
Oh, sorry.
This is amazing.
I see a blue ribbon, I see shiny things.
Big shiny flashy things. Well, good, good morning again, Madam Mayor and City Council. Trina McGoon, Director of Utility Services, for the record. Today I have a presentation on the One Water, One Water Nevada Advanced Purified Water Facility at American Flat. This is an update on the project and the construction manager at-risk project delivery method. But before I begin the presentation, I have a super exciting announcement that this project just won the American Society of Civil Engineers Project of the Year Award in the Environmental Engineering category, so.
That's amazing. I think that is incredible. I wanted to say thank you. I mean, that's awesome. Aren't you excited, Mr. Flansburgh? And your whole team, and I know, I mean, and I just have to say, that is pretty impressive, because you've come here many times. We've talked about this project many, 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 many times. And there were people that also, you know, were not as supportive.
Speaking with conviction.
Yes, exactly, and that is just impressive, and I just think you've done a phenomenal job. Great. Yay. Okay.
Okay, one other item I wanted to remind this body, or I'm not sure if they're aware of. This project also won the 2021 One Water Nevada National Water Reuse Community Water Champion Award, which recognizes utilities and local government entities that ensure safe, reliable, locally controlled water supply through the development of water recycling treatment facilities, infrastructure, or other water reuse projects. And so really, water resources in our area, we all know, are scarce on the west coast here locally and on the west coast, and this project is shaping up to be the national model for indirect potable reuse.
That's awesome. Phenomenal. That is so great.
Okay, so here I have an agenda for this presentation, where we will touch on the previous council actions and provide a project overview and a status of where we are today. I will then explain why we are recommending the Construction Manager at-Risk Project Delivery Method, and wrap it up with a look at the project schedule and future financial decision points. Okay, so although this project, the pilot project began in 2010, I've listed more recent council actions on this project and highlight that this council awarded a subsurface geotechnical study in 2018, the basis of design report, and preliminary design in 2020, the ILA with the Truckee Meadows Water Authority, and 30% design in late 2021. I wanted to note that the ILA with Tamwa specifies the cost splits for the project, but it does not specify the project delivery method. Okay, and then here I'm gonna go just to this project overview. I know, you know, most of you are familiar, but just as a refresher, down here, I don't know if you can see on the clicker, this is the Reno Stead Water Reclamation Facility. The proposed advanced purified water facility would be located across the street. The A-plus water quality, quality water would then be pumped up to the American Flat Farm, which is up here north of the airport property. There would be a polishing facility, injection location, and extraction location. Just to orient everyone on the project. So some of the project benefits of this overall project are obviously moving effluent flows from Swan Lake. It allows for the 4 MGD expansion of Rizworf. It creates a new renewable resource with approximately $80 million in future water rights sales. And it promotes water resiliency and a drought-proof water source to our region. Okay, early this week, we had a new City of Reno drone go out and take some photos of the project area. So just as a status update of the project, this is a photo of the intake at Swan Lake that is the pump system that was drawing down the lake from the 2017 event. It is also located about here, and then it's pumped up Lemon Drive up to the American Flat Farm. A couple other things to note, the bottom of Swan Lake is at about elevation 49, or, sorry. The bottom of the intake at Swan Lake is at about elevation 4916, and the FEMA 100-year water surface elevation is at 4924. So that's about eight feet of depth in that lake. Not super deep, but pumping it down has really been successful. The next photos you see here are of the American Flat Farm. It's really hard to gauge how big this is from the ground or, you know, even these photos, because there's not a whole lot of reference here. This location is about, the pipeline from Swan Lake to this location is about four miles long, and once we get up here, this farm is about 350 acres in size. To help better visualize that, I have this aerial photograph. Here's Silver Lake, Swan Lake, the entire Reno Stead Airport. And then you see these green circles up here, these are the, these are the pivots, and so this is the American Flat Farm. So for scale, you know, it's a quarter to a half of the size of Swan Lake in area. Status of the Rizworf pilot trailer. We are continuing pilot testing at Rizworf for refined process improvements and working with NDEP on those process improvements. And next, we will get into the benefits of C Mar project delivery on this. As you recall, council recently approved a C Mar contract for the Moana Springs project due to the complexity of the project's plumbing system and to take advantage of the geothermal in the area. So that project was complex. As you can see from these photos, the American Flat Advanced Purified Water Project will be far more complex from a piping, pumping, and water quality treatment standpoint. These photographs are of Hampton Road Sanitation District's project in Virginia, and their highly traded water system is being used to replenish the Potomac Aquifer in eastern Virginia. But this just really kind of points out just the massive amount of piping, pumping, and processes that will occur in this facility. Additional photographs, the one on the left is the Tamwa's Mount Rose Water Treatment Plant, and then this is a photograph of the pilot within, at Rizworf. Oops, sorry. Okay, so on this photograph, we show the Donner Summit Waste Water UV System on the left, and Rizworf's under-construction UV system on the right. Just again, more of the complexity of this type of project and bringing it together. So the C Mar project delivery method is a team approach involving the City of Reno, Tamwa, the architect engineer, and the C Mar. C Mar is a qualification-based, based program, and it includes a guaranteed maximum price, not a low bid. And then two of the great benefits of this project are that it provides early identification and resolution of construction issues on a complex treatment system, and it provides scheduling and supply chain management with early procurement. As you all know, we've been seeing a lot of issues with scheduling and supply chain. It also allows for the contractor to know what's coming up and staff up to be able to construct this project under the time schedule that's allowed. I just wanted to also say, as noted before, Tamwa would manage this RFP and C Mar process and, and enter into the agreement with Preconstruction Services with the city to provide reimbursement under the ILA. So on the C Mar selection process, we're looking at Tamwa to advertise the request for C Mar in the May-June timeframe. The C Mar selection process will include a C Mar interview panel for ranking proposals, and final scores will be available to the public. In July, we will be looking to procure the C Mar preconstruction and design consultant 60% design agreements. And then the C Mar obviously will be on board then to provide input throughout the design. This graphic shows our schedule and future council actions. A couple of things to note on this slide. Construction of the APWF at American Flat is anticipated to commence in early 2023 and be complete by the spring of 2026. We, we are commencing, we have done some public outreach in the past. We're commencing a more targeted outreach program right now that will continue throughout the design and construction process. And while we're not seeking any council action today for funding, we anticipate bringing back contracts for approximately $33 million in fiscal year '23 and $48 million in fiscal year '24. I also wanted to note, this is another exciting piece of news for this project, that Tamwa and the City of Reno recently submitted our USBR Watersmart grant application in receives, in, in hopes of receiving up to $30 million of grant for this project. Monday, we received notification from the USBR that, that they have given us official approval of our feasibility study, and so this is great news in progressing the project towards receiving this Watersmart grant. And so given this information, staff recommends that council approve the recommendation to proceed with the C Mar project delivery method administered by Tamwa. And Madam Clerk, I have a video that we may be able to play that, that is also from our drone footage on Monday, and it just kind of gives you an overall picture of the north valleys in this area, Swan Lake up to the American Flat Farm, and a kind of zoom around the farm. And thank you for the opportunity. Those are the Lemon Valley Treatment Ponds, or Effluent Ponds on the south side of Swan Lake. And then we'll start to zoom north. So this is current conditions out there. And we're zooming into the intake that pumps the lake down up to the American Flat Farm. There it is, right there, there's the intake. That's churning back south, looking at the same. Here's the overland pipeline that takes the floodwaters down and brings them up to the American Flat Farm. American Flat Farm. That's moving north to the farm. Same pipeline. And then here's a really great overall overview of the farm.
Mr. Manager, we have reached a new height. We have a drone. We have an amazing presentation to go with this amazing award, and I hope we show this on our city channel. It's truly amazing.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Oh yeah, we're taking a victory lap.
That's super awesome. Okay, go ahead, Vice Mayor Jordan.
Thank you very much. I agree with my council member, Councilwoman Doerr, that the importance of this project and the prestige of the award that was received is just going to pale in comparison to the benefits that our community experiences by it. And I would just say, I know we've got members of Tamwa here in the room too, that, you know, when we started talking about this, how long was it, three years ago?
At least.
It was one of those things that, we don't know the outcome, but my goodness, by doing nothing, we will get nothing. So there was a lot of really innovative minds and experts and a largely the majority of the council that supported this and Tamwa as well, to venture into this space of water sustainability to really take a situation that wasn't particularly great and do something damn amazing with it. And kudos to everybody that took that leap. Saying no is super easy. Saying yes, we sit here today with this successful project because a lot of folks said yes. So kudos to everybody involved.
Councilman Reese.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. McGoon, thank you so much for the presentation. I, you know, we, we get a lot of good presentations in this room, but this was one of the best. I appreciate the, kind of the complexity of it, but you made it accessible to our public too, and I think that's the important part. It is a, an incredible opportunity, and while it, at times has been described as a science experiment, I think this is an opportunity for us to say, well, you just won first prize at the science fair, right? I mean, that's very exciting. I, you know, the blue ribbon that you had at the beginning really piqued my interest because, of course, I think that that is, you know, as far as science goes, it's always the folks who are exploring new places, who are testing new ideas, who are finding new cures for things that are driving what science is, right? And so this is exciting in large part because, for me, having lived here my whole life, we have always been a community that has gone between drought and not drought seasons. And so we live in a high mountain desert. We can't change that geography nor would we want to. Some of those drone footage were just stunning in terms of what we're looking at there. But water is that thing which gives us life, and so in this regard, this project really provides the opportunity to find a way to meet those challenges that we know that we're getting into as a, as a globe warms, as our community grows, as we see changing climate and weather patterns that in, impact very intimately our watershed. And so I'm very proud to have been a very small part, and I, and I do mean it in the smallest sense, of this opportunity. Ultimately, I think, not only does the farming operation speak to me, but as we continue the experiment and we study the water, and as we pull it out and reinject it, I'll be interested to follow the science of it, of course. And again, I think, you know, I'm, I'm not a scientist, I'm a lawyer, and so my brain doesn't always work the same way as perhaps engineers' minds do. But from my perspective where I'm sitting, wow, it's just pretty incredible to see it. I wanted to speak ever so briefly to the CMAR process. I am supportive of the recommendation that's being made. I think, given the complexity of it and also what we get with the CMAR process in terms of how it allows us to navigate the, I, I would say, the difficult construction environment that we operate in, I think that's super important too. So I don't want to leave the discussion without saying yay, awesome, on the science experiment, but also great job in doing the work to make it happen, meaning we can all be excited, I think, about what we're seeing visually. But to get there, we've got to have budgets, and we've got to have the CMAR selected, we've got to have construction partners, and we've got to have all of you in your department who are working through those complexities. So it's easy for us to say kudos, but also I want to recognize the work that's going on behind the scenes.
Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, so I continue to have concerns about this, but I, you know, I congratulate everyone and I acknowledge how exciting it must be from a technical staff perspective to be working on this, maybe more on the water side than on the wastewater, because a plant expansion's a plant expansion, but when you're moving into, you know, really innovative water stuff in the drying west, I'm sure it's great. But in addition to drone footage, I need to see spreadsheets, like multiple-page, large-format spreadsheets, to understand the financial implications to the rate structures for these sewer users and to Tamworth. And I'll let my colleagues know, I don't know who was at regional planning the other day, but councillor, Mayor Lawson kind of stood up and made an aside comment, I overheard him say something along the lines of, "And we've got, you know, millions of dollars that need to be spent over at Tamworth," you know, something like, a concern about Tamworth. And so, you know, what, what is needed at Tamworth? Where's the rate structure for that? How is this expansion going to be paid for by the users in this sewer shed? And oh, by the way, what is this sewer shed? Is this what is needed to bring on 30,000 residents above Swan Lake and Silver Lake area? And if this is, and that's the crux that does that, do we have the capacity to serve all that development that's coming online? I'm just, I'm, I'm really inquiring on the land use, but more so, I've seen some very preliminary rate structure calculations, but I have so many outstanding questions on those. I don't understand how you're going to get to that from what you're proposing. So on, on hookup charges, connection fees, so you're going into the rate structure base, and the rate structure base is on a CPI right now, which is going to be huge this October, we know. And are we going to need more? And should we have a rate structure that goes back to some of these people who have been skating free on connection charges since 2014, where we have not increased our connection charge? Brought on a lot of growth in this North Valleys of sewer at flat fees. If they were over in Sparks, they would have been CPI'd on the connection fees. So I continue to say that getting out in front of these contracts and these multi-pronged agreements without having done the financial due diligence over here and the comprehension and the understanding, the projections, is negligent. And I will use the term negligent because I'm using it in my own vocabulary about what I see as responsible as an elected official, and that's the financial well-being of a fund or of our organization. So I won't be supporting, and I'll also say another thing, is not having the financials cooked to the degree that I think they need to be to move forward. I'm also uncomfortable letting it go over to Tamwa to manage it. I know they probably have the expertise, maybe the bandwidth, but it lets those who are so hands-off, arms-length from the financial decisions, be in charge of, you know, the change orders and so on, and that is also objectionable to me. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for letting me have the table.
Councilwoman Weber.
Thank you so much. As representative of Ward Four, I just want to say thank you. This, this is amazing. When I was elected in 2018, one of the first meetings I went to was the One Nevada meeting, and was very, it was amazing to hear the, the news then, and as we've proceeded, it, it is so awesome. I'd like you to please comment, or Mr. Flansburgh as well, in the comments that my colleague made.
Sure. So we currently are under study right now with a consultant on the connection fees. We do have some preliminary numbers that we've shared with council, and we will be bringing those back at some point this year for updating those connection fees. I believe this, trying to remember the second question. So it does include, so it does include the entire build-out sewer shed for development based on the land use master plan phased over time. So currently, we're, we're expanding the plant to 4 MGD. We're looking to potentially in the future expand it again to 6 MGD with different effluent management solutions, and then ultimately, we might get to something like 8 MGD out there. But this is all kind of a stepwise planning process that you don't get over your skis on, on what you're building and the amount of infrastructure you're putting out there as development grows, because, you know, that can ramp up and it can slow down. So we try to judge, you know, what do we have coming in, and we build that infrastructure ahead of time so that we can allow for that development, but not build too much infrastructure that, you know, we have a stranded asset for many years.
Thank you. And Mr. Flansburgh, did you want to comment as well? I saw you stand up.
Thank you for the opportunity. For the record, John Flansburgh, Director of Public Works. We have wrapped up our connection fee. We have been sharing that information with council. The next step that we have though is actually to go out to the development community and share that information with them, get their feedback, explain to them, you know, everything that goes into that. One of the things that kind of delayed us a little bit on that was getting the facility plan completed for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. Now that we have that information, we know what, what's going to be needed in our collection system, we can go forward with those numbers. I, I also want to report to the council that we did look at our user charges, the quarterly fees that people pay for their sewer service, and we are sufficient. We have the funding that we need there. We are raising those by CPI on an annual basis, and to Councilwoman Breckus's point, and I think what everybody's heard, you know, this last, last year was going to, is a higher CPI number. But we have been consistent in doing that, and, and our funds are sufficient. And CPI, again, is just paying for that inflationary cost that everybody gets hit with, you know, cost of construction, cost of operations, chemical costs, those types of things. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you so much, and, and I also support the CMAR, CMAR program. It is absolutely the best way to go, and just want to say I am totally supportive of this, and I'd like to make the motion if I could, when I can. Okay, thank you.
All right, go ahead, Councilwoman Doerr.
Yeah, thank you. Maybe it's my many years as being the state water planner, constantly looking for new water supplies for our driest state, that made me so excited when the Tamwa staff brought this idea to us along with Mr. Flansburgh. We were facing the 2017 flood, we needed an answer. But at the same time, we needed new water supplies. I mean, it's been, become clear, we cannot stay static and just live off the Truckee River. As good a job as Tamwa's done with creating upstream storage and taking advantage of that through the various agreements on the Truckee River and actually acquiring storage, we can only go so far with that. We have to actually create more. And this is a, this is a twofer. This takes a, something that's considered something you throw away and makes it into something that's valuable. And Mr. Flansburgh and I have been having a number of conversations about how to properly value that resource. You know, how do you take something that you threw away, like trash, in fact, paid to get rid of, and then turn it into a valuable resource that people are then paying to use? And, and how does that philosophical change work? And how do we transition from that type of throwaway economy to producing something useful? It's much like recycling, right? We threw away a lot of stuff into landfills, we then figured out how to recover the valuable parts, we then ran through some supply issues about, well, who's around to do it? How do you do it? Who wants to use this recycled aluminum, aluminum or recycled paper? What's it good for? What is it valued at? How do we compare, let's say, a recycled piece of paper as compared to an original piece of tree that was turned into a piece of paper? Well, it's very much the same. We're taking water that we've already paid for. We've already paid to pull it out of the river or pump it out of the ground. We've paid to treat it. We've paid to distribute it out to communities. We've paid to recollect it. And then we're about to throw it away in various places. And now we're looking at this very unique technology, which has been done in different ways in other places. We're not the very first people that have ever done this. But we are, I think, having a proof of concept in terms of how does this work in Nevada with Nevada soils and Nevada aquifers? And how can this become a resource? You know, someone recently said to me, "Well, are we running out of water?" I said, "What we're doing is, we're challenged with water, that water isn't always where we need it, where the people are growing." So let's say you're down in South Reno. Can we pipe Truckee River water all the way down and use it effectively down there? We, we do a blend of wells and Truckee River water comes to a certain distance. Same thing up north. So I, I can't speak more highly of this, you know, both from my historical experience of just trying to get Nevada more water secure, to this demonstration project, which has now been recognized, you know, with the great production of our teams working together. I mean, it's just really phenomenal, I can't say more about it. And, and I was, I think you guys will remember, one of the earliest supporters. I just, I was very excited about the opportunity. So we still have a ways to go. We still have to make sure that we can recover the water, that it's good quality, that, that nothing's happened to it. It hasn't fugit, it isn't fugitive water left us, that we can recover it and use it. So thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm pleased to be able to support today.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, Councilwoman Breckus.
So back to the rates. You know, I don't see a finance person from Reno here in the, in the room right now, but I would really, let, let's, let's try one little minor step to allay my concerns, and that is, we've been waiting on the Tamworth, the Tamworth Master Plan. Let's get a presentation on that, so I don't have to hear, you know, side comments by Mayor Lawson about how much it's going to cost in the fence, just so I can understand what the number we're looking at, what's coming down the pipeline on, on those obligations there. And then also, you know, the system, you, we've spent a lot of money trying to understand where our system's working and not, to advance our policies, like infill. We need to, you know, keep working at the older pipes to have the infill going. You know, we're doing stuff way out there, but we got to do that. So let's get a, let's get a presentation on Tamworth to understand that we have the rest, the rate structure to do Tamworth. We're not robbing Tamworth to do this and letting this Tamworth deteriorate. That would give me a lot of concern, and it would also help me, when those rates go up, say, 8% in October, let people know that their rates in these old homes, old neighborhoods in Reno, which are their housing costs, even if you're a renter, they're built into your housing costs, aren't going up here where we've let a whole lot of growth come on and skate free. And let's have, hi, hi, Mayor, let's have, let's have some other discussions. Let's look to having the, the policy discussion, just one policy question, and that is, is RISWORF going to pay for RISWORF and Tamworth pay for Tamworth? Or is Tamworth going to pay for RISWORF? Let's have that policy discussion. Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Councilwoman Reese, go right ahead.
Yeah, I guess I would say I don't disagree with the Ward One member about the need for a presentation, and that's what's coming, right? You've already indicated that. But I do find it very odd, because it's almost as though the Ward One member is setting us up to have a sort of a Hunger Games-style thing where Tamworth is pitted against these opportunities that we're doing in the North Valleys. And that I don't like, in part because, of course, Ms. Breckus's spouse is a planning department head in Sparks. So this, like, subtle thing that's being said about the costs at Tamworth, that sits uneasy with me if the Ward One member is not going to disclose that conflict. So I'm happy to have those conversations, and we'll figure out who sewers to wear and what they pay, but we're going to do that in the daylight, and we're going to have an honest conversation about it.
Okay. Okay, I am going to send it to you, Councilwoman Weber.
And thank you for your, for allowing me to do this, but I move to approve the staff recommendation.
Okay, I have a motion?
Awesome job.
Second.
I have a motion and a second?
Could I have a little?
Go ahead.
Now, I just want to get to this STEMworth versus RISWORF idea, is we've put STEMworth, you know, even with the auctions today, it's all its own thing. They get the money, the rates go there, it's done. They get the money, the rates go there, it's done. You know, it's done by the county. But are we going to go with that model, with Tom Wharf for Riz Wharf? Why are we, why are we blending some ratepayers in Reno, and then letting some be on their own entity? That's not an equitable distribution of your rate policy. This is all I've been asking for, for four or five years, really. And it's simple. It's a simple policy question to the council. What is your policy for blending rates, sewer rates? Because you have the practice one way, and you have a practice other way. Do you want to be equal or not? And, you know, it does come down to cost, because Tom Wharf has costs, and we haven't seen those. So I appreciate, you know, that's why I'm not supporting it, and I'll continue to ask these questions, because at the end of the day, I think there's going to be some big, big numbers coming back, but I hope you can get that grant. But we'll see what the federal landscape's like, too. Thank you.
All right, I have a motion and a second?
Madam Mayor, I apologize for the interjection, but before we go on, for public comment, if anyone online wishes to speak, please raise your hand. We have not gotten any public comment in chambers, and we've not received any correspondence, and I do not see any hands raised, so you're good there.
Perfect, thank you so much. Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries, and I would like to stand up and give you a huge round of applause, Mr. Flansburgh. And for Tom Wharf, and Trina, Trina, for coming up. I know sometimes it's a little hectic up here, but you've done a phenomenal job. Great job, Trina. And Mr. Flansburgh, incredible job, and not to mention, you stand up here and take this criticism. I want to apologize for that. You guys are rock stars. Thank you. And I know all of us up here appreciate it, and your staff over here, they're behind you, and they're rooting you on. Thank you for rooting for Reno, you're amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Mayor, if it works for you, we're going to move on to item D4. I'll tackle the, the public comment aspect right away. If anyone wishes to speak on this, please raise your hand. There is no one signed in, in chambers, and we've not received any correspondence, and at this time, I do not see anyone with their hand raised on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. You're doing a great job. I just feel like you have that voice for, like, TV or radio.
Playing all the hits here in the council chambers.
I love it.
Late night DJ voice.
I love it. We need to start and end with this, I love it. Okay, here we go.
Madam Mayor, I need to read a disclosure first.
Please do.
So I've known Ms. Olson since I think we were 12 years old, so I'm just disclosing that we go way, way back.
She changed her diapers, no, I'm just kidding.
No, she couldn't have done that.
At 12?
Yeah, so, no, our high school is celebrating our 30th reunion this summer, so we're going to be getting down.
Wow, that's so cool. I didn't know that.
It's Reno, right?
It's so true, it's so, it's Reno, it's very, the biggest little city.
Can I make a disclosure, too? And it's not, it's not the same thing, but I've known her since my son was born, and I was working at the same place that she was working, and she was 17 at the time. Seventeen, eighteen? So, but anyway, I, I just think that she does a great job, and I, I just love what she does with strategic planning.
Well, that is actually a wonderful segue. So I'm Doug Thornley, I'm the City Manager here in Reno. With me today is Erica Olson, and this is our halfway point check-in on the adopted strategic plan. And so it's nice to start with an acknowledgement of just how fabulous Erica and the On Strategy team is at strategic planning. And that is why we reached out to them. So, this is going to be a relatively brief presentation, we're going to cover three sections. First, I'm going to give you an overview of your six primary areas of focus in the strategic plan. We're going to identify some of the progress that we've made, and then I'm going to turn it over to Erica. And Erica is going to talk about the interview process that she went through with most of you, and the feedback that we got, and then I'm going to come back, and I'm going to talk to you about how, you know, we've sort of synthesized that feedback and what we'd like to focus on for the remainder of the time we have with this strategic plan, ideally so that we can leverage it into a new and better five-year plan, and we can use it to make budget decisions. So if that sounds good, there they are again, those six primary areas of focus, the overarching goals for the strategic plan. Like I said, we're halfway through, and generally, there've been a whole bunch of successes in all of these areas. I'm going to highlight just a few, we're going to start at the top, and we'll work clockwise around the circle. So, this council has managed the debt situation and reduced our debt in such a way that you've been able to make generational investments, and things like the Public Safety Center and the Moana Pool. We're much more fiscally healthy than we were just three, four, or five years ago, as we stand here today. You're also poised to pass a balanced budget for the first time in more than two decades. And so congratulations to all of you for the discipline that you've shown on the fiscal side of the House. In public safety, we talked a little bit today about the Public Safety Center, but that is going to transform the way we engage in community police work here in the biggest little city. We are the first city in Nevada to establish pedestrian safety zones. We hired 30 new firefighters this year, and we continue to provide extremely high-quality public safety services for everyone who calls our community home. Economic opportunity, homelessness, and affordable housing, that's been a topic that's been top of mind for both this body and staff over the last two years, 18 months. And I'm thrilled to tell you that over a two-year period, the council has approved funding for 2,350 affordable units. We've invested $13.5 million of ARP money in, in the housing affordability space over this, over the span of three distinct projects. Through the Home Program and others, we continue to establish new units and keep older units online here in our community, so that we don't have folks who are perhaps falling out of an affordable situation. The City of Reno has processed $6.4 million in rental assistance, and we've given an additional $5.7 million to the RHA for rental assistance over the last two years. And we've identified ARP opportunities to support workforce development and access to healthcare here in the community that the council will be able to examine and vet and vote on here in relatively short order. Building permits, building valuation, so whether in volume or value, we are up, we are at record levels in, in both of those spaces, which is, I suppose, a more technical way of saying that the building in this town is going like gangbusters. Not to be outdone, business licenses are, are flat, and while we'd like to see them tick up, coming out of a pandemic, to have them be flat and have revenue from business licenses be flat, suggests a seriously more resilient economy in Reno than perhaps we've enjoyed in decades past. And so I think that's a testament to the $5.5-plus million that this council has invested in small business support over the last two years. We just had a fabulous presentation by Ms. Magoon. The swag chain is on order, but the projects that we've taken on, the infrastructure projects that we've taken on, and our commitment to environmental sustainability is unparalleled. Whether it's the American Flat Project, and all of its many, many awards, and its, its cutting-edge technology that will change the way wastewater is processed and potable water is reused in the arid west, whether it's the Ledger Platform that we're using so that we can make better decisions on how we consume energy, at the end of the day, I'm thrilled to tell you that we are one point away from being a lead gold-certified city, of which there are fewer than 30. So, sadly, though, Las Vegas is one, so we really need to find that point. Finally, in Arts Parks Historical Resources, I don't need to tell you again, but I will, we've secured half a million dollars in NEA grants, so that we can support the local art economy. This council is making significant investments, both in the Moana Springs Aquatic Center, and using ARP and CARES funding to support parks and recreation programs across the community. And of course, this council has been focused on preserving historical resources like the Lear Theater, and we continue to work in that space so that we can take advantage of the foundation that, that our community has already built, and, and make it even better. And so with that, I guess it's my opportunity to hand it over to Erica, but to say, all of those successes are incredibly noteworthy, they're also anecdotal. And so one of the messages that you're going to hear today is that we need to work as a staff and, and bring to you more measurables, right? We need to identify the metrics that actually matter in our service delivery platforms, so that we can make informed decisions about how we deliver services and do that more efficiently. So, with that, Erica Olson.
Good afternoon, I think it is, Madam Mayor, council members. Thanks for the opportunity to work with the leadership team and the Office of Policy and Strategy, to do a midpoint refresh, which is really cool, honestly, to take it just a minute to reflect on all the amazing work. I know that was just a handful of highlights. And to check in on where you want, where you all want to go going forward, that's a mouthful. Since the plan was adopted in Feb. 2020, everything's changed. So now is the time to just pause and say, where do we want to go for the next two and a half years of this plan? So, that was the point of this midpoint refresh. It was intended to be lightweight, purposefully, a refresh, not an overhaul. And the team has heard me say several times, it's much easier to do an overhaul than a refresh, so you constantly want to kind of make more changes. So we resisted that urge, because there's a lot of good work that's in progress still to be done. And we did, however, want to make sure that if there's anything majorly missing, now is the time to get that feedback from council, and make sure that that's included in the next two and a half years for focus, as well as make sure that we're clear about what your priorities are. So those are the guidelines that we used for this refresh. And again, lightweight is really the, was really the point. In addition to that, seeking clarity, but not changing intent. So you, you adopted this plan in February 2020, and we stuck with that, that, that the plan was adopted, so we didn't want to mess with that. Moving on from there, how do we do this? From the bottom to the top, you received an update of progress to date. So that was the memo that had check marks and percentages and all that good stuff, really great summary of all the work that's done, based on the strategies you wanted to see moving forward, highly recommend, just check that out. A lot more accomplishments in there than Manager Thornley, Manager Thornley was able to share today. Then worked on a one-on-one basis with those council members that wanted to provide input, and I asked specifically, you know, how do we do so far? And what are your priorities going forwards? Pretty simple, so very easy in that regard. We pulled that together, worked with the leadership team, and provided a red-line plan that reflects the modifications that I believe is in your packet. So I'll talk about that in a minute. So here's what your feedback was. Generally speaking, on the right track, good progress has been made. The plan currently still, as in air quotes, reflects the work to be done. We didn't hear a lot of major changes, we didn't hear a lot of major misses, everything is still valid, and the stuff that's in play needs to continue. One thing we did hear in that bottom box there is, the current plan has a really long list of council priorities, which, you know, if everything's a priority, nothing's a priority. So we are going to simplify how the plan communicates your priorities, so we have that in front of us going forward. So you'll hear about that in just a minute. From the work specifically, when I asked what your top priorities were, what I heard across the board was housing affordability, of course, that's been a major point, and everybody said that. In addition to that, public safety, as well as some themes around managing and having well-planned growth. So again, that's pretty consistent, I don't think there's any surprises there, just calling that out and making a fine, a fine point on that. And again, Manager Thornley will talk about how that's going to influence the plan in the next two and a half years. But before we go there, just a couple points from my observations. As we just heard, we want to build our measurability muscle, so to speak, in the next two and a half years, such that when we come into the next plan, we've got, we've already got that going. And building great measures is not easy, building meaningful measures is not easy, we're going to work on that as part of this next part of the planning process. Memorable priorities, we already mentioned that. I always say, strategic plans have different lives for organizations, sometimes they're useful, sometimes they're not, but they are always good when they help guide decision-making. So I would just really ask that together as a group, we, we use this document and think about how does this help us make decisions, such that when we go into the next planning phase, we're able to reflect that even more, so. And then the last point, of course, is just, just a regular cadence of progress reporting, so all that's going to happen as well. So that's just using the plan as a, as a management tool with the current team and management direction that's in place. And then Manager Thornley's going to talk about where the focus is going to be for the next two and a half years of the work to be done.
All right, great.
All right. So that's right, I think there are two of these points that I would like to focus on for our next slide, and that is point number four and point number one. We need to be clear what the priorities of the council are, so that we can use those priorities in our decision-making framework. And then we do need to work on identifying those clear measures of success, so that it's not done by feel, it's done by hard numbers, and we can affirmatively tell you what progress we're making on the goals that you've set for the organization. And so, what we take that feedback and, and those areas of opportunity to mean is that if we focus on the efficient delivery of services throughout our community, we should be able to hit not only all six of the strategic goals that we started with, but these six areas that were identified specifically in the feedback that we received from the body. So, when we had our budget workshops a few weeks ago, I told you that in the, in the general fund, we have about $4 million worth of opportunity this year. Some of the recommendations that will come forward next week will focus on the efficient delivery of services. So, for example, we're going to ask you for permission to spend half a million dollars on a new CRM, a customer relationship management tool. That's going to eliminate, or it's going to combine five different software platforms into one. It will reduce manual entry, it will reduce errors, because it reduces manual entry. It's going to allow for real-time updates in the field, so that people who, for example, have a call into Reno Direct or, or an issue into Reno Direct, receive information about what we're doing to, to correct that matter in, in nearly real time. It's going to optimize routes, right? When you think about FedEx or UPS, they load the truck in a particular way, they prescribe a route for delivery. We don't have a tool that allows us to do that right now, and so it's all done by feel. This tool will allow us to do that, and so whether it's street maintenance, or sewer work, or parks work, we'll be able to better deploy the resources that we have. There's going to be a public dashboard, so that the public can see what we're doing about Reno Direct calls, how we're deploying our resources, and there will be an AI chat function, so that after hours or on weekends, when perhaps there's not a live person to, to man the helmet at Reno Direct, we still do have an interactive process, and we can better suss out what the issue is. All of that will help us better understand where our opportunities are, whether that's in gaining efficiencies in the, in the services that we deploy, or perhaps we've deployed too many resources to something, and we can redeploy them to some other problem, we can cover some more ground. This tool will help us better understand what we're doing in that space. Additionally, we're going to recommend spending about $150,000 for events and activation in our downtown space, as called for in the master plan and downtown action plan, and certainly in terms of revitalization, economic development in the, in the downtown space. We'll be recommending a pilot team of police officers, which is, of course, five patrol officers, a CSO, a sergeant, and a lieutenant. We'll be recommending additional staff in code enforcement, so that we're better able to go out and make sure that the community is safe in, in ways that perhaps the police are not equipped or trained, or even sort of the right tool for. We'll make sure that buildings are safe, we'll make sure that building plans are followed, we'll make sure that the conditions that are imposed by this body when we approve things are in fact brought to fruition, so that impacts on the community are mitigated where they exist. We'll be recommending funding additional training support and capital maintenance for our fire department. We want to make sure that they have the best training available, because their jobs are extremely dangerous, and we want them to be as safe as possible. Even, as I'm fond of saying, safety third, it is still incredibly important, and we want to make sure that they are appropriately resourced to do their job. I told you before about the one lead point, we are going to find that one lead point. And so paying attention to the sustainability space, keeping that top of mind in our decision-making, whether it's here at home, in terms of our own operations, or the development decisions that we make, I think that's incredibly important. And then finally, we're going to ask for some additional investment in human resources. So for a benefits manager and a manager for labor relations, we believe that happy people will stay working here. In a, in a, in a time when every employer is competing for the best, the brightest, the most talented, making sure that we invest in our people should be a priority for all of us. And doing it this way has the additional benefit of making certain that the, the robust benefits that, that this council has authorized for our employees are managed efficiently. And certainly, there will probably be a cost savings there, just by having someone have it top of mind as the primary core function of their job. We talked a little bit. We talked a little bit, both Ms. Olson and myself, about identifying those hard metrics, those hard measurables. That is an incredible challenge. It's one that, that the, the directors and myself will be focusing on for the balance of the calendar year so that we can come back and start next year's budget process with a much better understanding of, of how we can demonstrate success in these spaces. But again, that will identify opportunities for this body. It will streamline the services that we deliver and it will build a community that everyone is proud to call home. So we're happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you for your attention.
Okay, great job. Go ahead, Vice Mayor Jordan.
Thank you very much. Thank you for a very thorough yet brief presentation. That was good. Always a good job. Just remind me, when we selected these six priorities, they were in no ranking order. They were just six of our priorities, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So thank you for reminding me of that. It's been, it's been a bit. And then the activation of the public spaces, I know that's something that I have been vocal about for a variety of reasons. When you talked about the $150,000, that is for activation of public spaces, whether it's the Believe Plaza, the Retract Plaza, West Street Plaza. Is that what you intend? Or when we close off the, when we do the micro-mobility pilot program to maybe have something there, is that? I'm just trying to see if that's where my comments are fitting in.
So those, those are areas where it could fit in. Primarily, the city-sponsored events have no funding mechanism. And so it is an acknowledgement of the cost that goes into the three or four city-sponsored events that we have every year. And that in turn will allow us to pursue other activation opportunities.
Okay, okay. I was trying to understand what, what was what. Okay. And then that all, what I just mentioned, falls under the economic development category of our priorities. The, on this list would be under which? Downtown revitalization?
I think downtown revitalization, I think. Well, I've lost the slide deck now, but I think downtown-
You're using a different phrase on this slide than you were on the circle.
So for clarity, these phrases are what we heard in the feedback sessions. The first slide is the identified goals of the, of the council.
Thank you. I was trying to see how these fit into the circle. Okay, all right. I got it now. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Breckus.
I was going to say, I saw Ms. Dewar raise her hand before, but she's not in her seat, so I'll go. I, I take a little different view, and I just, I just want to give this back as really, hopefully friendly, you know, feedback is, because it's been unusual times. So in 2020, no, 2019, we had a workshop up at the University and, and then, and were you the facilitator, Ms. Olson? Okay, you were not the facilitator, which is fine. And then in February 20, right before the pandemic, we adopted this plan. And that's my understanding. And then in March of 20, maybe even February, we had a city manager say, I'm leaving. Then in 20, we had elections, but the body complement stayed the same. So the body complement is the same since 2019. And then in October of 20, I think Mr. Thornley joined us, is that correct? Okay. So since then, you know, there's been a lot, but I think I've had at least three times on my calendar, including for April 13th, a reconvening of the body on a strategic planning workshop. And in the world, how I view the strategic plan for a local government, I'm not an OD person at organizational development, but I, you know, I've been around cities a long time and have a masters in public administration, is you go in every year to strategic planning to rebalance it. And if it's 2020 and your plan is to 2025, then in 2021, it's the 2021 to 2026 plan. And that way, you're all very clear what your plans are. You review the accomplishments of net last year and you adopt a work program for the upcoming year. Because I think this plan is very broad, but each one needs an 18-month work program that then, you know, you have your metrics and all. And so I, I would suggest maybe pretty soon, like in the fall, maybe, you know, right after the election or to January, have that strategic workshop and have that set. A lot of bodies, I think the county is always in January. The first four years I was on, we were always right around there, too. I really think that that's a good way. Maybe you could do some research on some ICMA models for strategic planning because you're a new manager. But I would really encourage that we routinely do it. And I, and I do have to apologize. I had an April 13th, which I thought was a little tight because you want to do it in advance of the budget. You know, we just got a lot of budget presentation, maybe precursor for next week from you. But you want to do it with enough lead time for the budget so everyone knows where the council is as a body, because we act as a body. And so I would encourage you to gear up a model to, to do the strategic plan on a cycle of some sort. Maybe that's what you're, you're thinking about. And then I didn't get a chance to talk to you. I just got this memo this week of the refresh, and I have a lot of questions. I'm not inclined to adopt any sort of refresh at this point. I, I think someone put something on my calendar for the 14th and I had to decline it because I had something, and then it never got rescheduled. I, I don't know, you know, because I heard you say, Ms. Olson, for those who chose to sit down with you, and I don't think I decided not to. I think it was a time availability.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, going ahead, we are moving to Councilwoman Dewar.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I was so interested in this topic. I had two sessions, sort of an A and a B. We didn't get through everything the first time. So I'm really fascinated with the topic, but it's a hard topic. It's hard to do strategic planning. And we have taken a number of shots at it together. And what I was glad about this was that we, we weren't starting all over. So I actually appreciated that very much because that is hard work and we did the hard work. And, and the circle you showed is something that we really adopted, I'm going to say, seven, seven years, eight, almost eight years ago, almost seven years ago. And what I, what, I like this presentation that you handed us. I got a printout of where we are and from February 2020. But what, what I brought up in my meeting was the thing you spoke about, Mr. Thornley, which was the need to start integrating measurements. And three of us serve on tamwah, and I use them as an example of a group that I think does strategic planning pretty well. We get together, we roll up our sleeves, we sit in a casual room, we talk about the plan. As part of that, we assess our customers. We do a, and our customers in this case are city residents, and so are tamwahs. I think they polled about 600. And they say, how are we doing? You know, what areas are we excelling in? What areas do we need to focus on? So in other words, we, you have an opinion, we have an opinion as a policymaking body of what we need to do, but our residents also have an opinion. And I want to make sure as we move through this process that we consider implementing them in this process so that we find out, we may think we're doing fabulous on something, but they'd like more attention on it. Or we may really care about sustainability, let's say. Maybe they're not as impassioned about it as we are, you know, as a city. I'm just, I don't think any of that's true that I just said, but I'm just saying, I don't want to presume that I know. And I, and I'm, and for Councilwoman Breckus, Councilwoman Jordan, myself, I don't know. I mean, we found these reports that come in annually to be very helpful. Like it really helps us target our activities. The other thing that tamwah does that I'd love to see us do is they've adopted that red, green, yellow process where they take each, and whatever the word is, objective strategy, to-do item, and how are we doing on that item? So we can get a feel, you know? And we, and during that process, annual process, we get to add a few more to-do items, right? Like we might say, well, we heard X, and so we think we should add a Y to measure that and understand it better. So just some thoughts for going forward. I mean, it was hard. Some of the things were very obvious in the ranking, like, you know, Erica said, well, how are we doing on this and that? And some of the things were so broad that I thought we were doing fabulous in parts of the elements and then not as well in others. And so just giving it one metric, like, excellent. I, I, it was hard to evaluate the five things that were embedded in there. So just some thoughts for going forward, and I just appreciate this update. So thank you very much.
All right, Councilwoman Reese.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to say thank you both to Ms. Olson and to Mr. Manager. I think this is a little bit of sort of inside baseball, right? The strategic plan is certainly something that we all think very much about, but maybe the public is not as aware of. And so this is the opportunity at times for the public to see kind of what are some of the guiding principles. And for the city manager's office, I, I just think, you know, it's fair to say that your job is at times like herding cats in a room full of rocking chairs. And we all have very divergent opinions at times. And at times, I think I have been very guilty of this, and I think I've confided to you, Mr. Manager, that I get pulled in different directions and therefore some lack of focus. So for me, even if you just look at our meeting today, we, we've talked about arts, bees, I think Latino engagement, potable reinjection. I mean, this is something that is, you know, to people who are not necessarily sitting in this position, it's hard to describe at times how often we must switch direction and move to other things and topics very quickly. And what, what I want to say is that I don't believe it's easy for the city manager's office to do that, and many of the folks in the CMO's office are here. And I just want to say thank you, you know? Really, it, it is important that we look at this, these goals and these frameworks so that we can be reminded of the importance and priorities that we might assign to certain things. Not so much that we would all always agree on them, but I just think that you have a tremendously difficult job to do and you do it incredibly well. I think Ms. Breckus indicated that you have been with us since 2020. And in that period of time, while it seems, you know, short, you know, they say the, the years are short, but the days long at times. And so we've been through a lot. And I just commend you and also everybody in the city manager's office for helping us to get there. I want to go then to a point that you made about the route and using that analogy. One of the things that I want to make sure that we are doing as we design the route for all of these issues is that we continue to emphasize and examine the ways in which equity guides our decision and that we are making decisions about how the policies we adopt affect most of our Black and Brown community, people of color, marginalized, and certainly are poor. Because I think that while we all often have ideas about things, I think I want to make sure that the route continues to focus on some of the equity. And it overlays all of these topics. And I see it in areas like economic opportunity, words that in environmental sustainability, all of those things for me touch on that. And so for my part, and it sounds like Councilmember Dewar spent an A and a B meeting. I had a very quick meeting because I understood, I, I understood sort of the assignment, as the kids would say, and understood what we were doing, that anyone didn't have the opportunity to, you know, do it. I think just speaks to, you know, their inability to, to get that part down. So I thank you. I think it's good. I think we're making what we can measure measurable, and I look forward to being a part of those conversations on an ongoing basis.
All right, Councilman Delgado.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank my colleagues, too, for their comments. Great job as two individuals that I know very well, very accomplished, very professional, very astute in terms of how to present strategic planning in our community and understanding our community for the needs that we, we are, and it's very timely as well. It's no secret across the nation, anyone's going back and doing a revisit in terms of their goals, in terms of what we've had to deal with the last two years. And so I appreciate us being proactive and being professional and say, let's take a pause for a second, let's regroup, let's figure out what this looks like here for the next few years. And that's, and it's timely to do that. And so appreciate you guys bringing that back and checking in with all of us. What I will add as, as a piece to this, too, is, and I've mentioned this during our meetings, is approaching things through a healthcare lens as well. I say that with respect that we just dealt with the last two years, but we can definitely see the overlaps. And to my Councilman Reese's point is opportunities where we can see the, the infrastructure and the improvements, the, in terms of our perks and what that means for many of our communities that have been plagued with chronic disease issues in terms of how that overlaps, right? As we are healthier communities, quality of life, et cetera, et cetera. Those are all opportunities as we start to be a lead certified city. I'm sure there's opportunities where we can see more healthier community and city as we start to grow and learn from what the pandemic has shown in terms of certain communities have been, were overburdened more than others in terms of how these opera dollars are spent, et cetera, et cetera, and opportunities for us to shine. So I appreciate that. And it's again, an opportunity for us to show not only internally, even more stronger direction, as Councilman Reese stated and other colleagues, in terms of how we get spread and pulled in different ways, gives it everybody an opportunity to kind of see the road ahead of us and how we build a work plan forward. So thank you, and also for our community to see that we're, we hear you and we're doing the work. And you guys, we have smart, strong people taking their charge. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilman Delgado. I thought it was excellent. I get to work with you on other boards and you always do a phenomenal job. So I mean, this community is so lucky to have you, Erica. I did get the honor to sit down with several staff, with Doug and many people to go over this. And you know, it's so funny because sometimes depending on what's happening in the city, it really can change, right? But for the most part, like honestly, we are right on track and it's exciting that we're actually, this is the furthest that I've seen when we've come to strategic planning and actually getting it done, implementing it, staying on course. So I really commend you because I know that it can be challenging, especially when you have, you know, seven different ideas up here kind of going on. But at the end of the day, it's important to accomplish all of that. We have to do it together or somewhat as much as we possibly can, or we cannot lead this city and we can't lead the organization. And so, and I got to commend staff because I think we're, you know, we're an excited bunch up here, but we're not easy, right? But that's also a good thing. But we've got great staff that helps us implement this. And I just think, Doug, I want to commend you because for so long, you know, it was hard to stay on top of and strategize our strategic plan. And I think this is the best we've seen. So good job, good job. Anyway, what do you need from us? I'm thinking we want to, okay. Okay, perfect. Go ahead.
I did have one question, then I'll take a stab at this motion. So my question is this, clearly all, none of this gets accomplished if the consumption of your and all of our staff and department heads and departments' time, that's all we have at the City of Reno. We're not making widgets. We, time is our bounty. And so it's under your and your department head's direction about how that gets allocated. So how, how do you anticipate keeping us and as a body and as individuals on task and not squirrel or have an inordinate amount of consumption of your and staff's time unequally allocated? How do you, how do you see that happening? Because I even had to be reminded of the six things on the wheel. As they came up, I was like, oh, well, we're pretty, we're pretty on track here. And try to always remember the things in which we ask you to do to somehow tie back to those six priorities. What, how do you see keeping us all collectively and individually on task?
I am so glad you asked that question. I think by figuring out the measurables, we'll be better able to help everyone understand how the time is expended. Because you're quite right, right? The only thing we have to sell is time. And it doesn't matter if it's time spent thinking on measurable strategic plan, time spent cleaning a street, time spent trimming trees in a park, time spent being a lifeguard. It's all just time, right? And, and so by being able to better measure how we deliver those services, we'll be able to better explain how we are spending that time. And then you all will be able to say, well, we'd prefer to have that time spent this way. You'll be able to see sort of right there in hard numbers how much time it takes to do any sort of project. And I think that's the difference between, that's the difference we're talking about, right? So it's the difference between the anecdotal successes, which of course are very real and they are worth celebrating that we talked about at the front end of the, of the presentation, and the actual efficiency in delivery of services that we're striving for through the, through the six pillars of the strategic plan.
Okay, that was helpful. All right, thank you. I'll take a stab at a motion. If it goes, it goes.
I just wanted to ask one quick question. When I met with you all, I was talking about, and I know that we've been doing some of this, but I think it's really important that when something comes before us, that we identify what the strategic plan part is. And I don't, I, I know you've kind of talked about it and we've, we've seen some of that, but I think it needs to be more consistent and specifically to the priorities.
You know, I think one of the big things coming out of all this is setting up some more practices that connect the strat plan to the work. And that looks like the, you know, the items that come before you, as well as when, the calendar of when this work gets done, when it comes back to you, how it syncs with budget. calendar of when this work gets done, when it comes back to you, how it syncs with budget. So under Mr. Thornley's direction, we will be putting that consistency and that formalization in place for this next iteration of how a strategic plan is used for the city. So hearing all the comments that you all just made, that will be forthcoming, including those types of connections. So, cool.
Thank you very much and thank you for the meeting we had as well. I thought it was very, very helpful and I made sure to have that priority on my calendar. At this time, the motion, move to accept the mid-plan update with the following changes as displayed on the screen.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor.
Could I have a comment on this? I'm not going to support and I'll tell you why. It's really a kind of a symbolic, you know, vote. One, I enjoyed hearing from all my colleagues today about their priorities and revisiting the work we did in 2019 and I would have liked to have done it in a workshop setting. April 13th was on my calendar, it got moved. I thought it was tough timing anyway because by April, our heads are in budget. And, you know, maybe we could have held this off for a couple more months and done it the first week in June. I want to convene with my colleagues. I think we, we need a body that needs to have some dialogue outside of item B1, B2, B3. And I think you're going to struggle until you are able to do that with a council body. Secondly, the work program is not there. This motion here, identifying needs to promote infill development focusing on opportunities within the coherent loop, we just had two days this year already of affordable housing workshops. There should be four bullet items of what that is this year in the next 12 months, in my view. And I'll tell you how it's helpful to me. I had a constituent reach out to me from Dickerson Road yesterday or over the weekend and say, Jenny, we have so many Airbnbs coming in in Dickerson Road. What is it doing to our affordable housing, you know, stock? And I've been trying to get an Airbnb ordinance on for three or four years. And I'm fine that we haven't. Collectively, we need to agree what it is, but I want to see the four items that we're doing for the infill development. This is the same broad language that's in the master plan that we haven't done, you know, we, we haven't moved forward in, since we adopted the 2017 master plan. So my vote is, one, the process. And if I missed after the April 13th was, you know, canceled and wasn't able to come to that April 14 meeting and should have followed up, usually staff follows up with me, I apologize. My head was in budget probably at that time. But I also think that you need to dial this in a little bit more. So when things like we're refreshing the plaza come up and I'm told by memo the day it's happening, I can explain to people where it is on the work program and also know that the five times I talked to our city manager about my desire to see shade and other improvements on Civic Plaza was incorporated into the work program and design. So I'm not going to support, but you know, hopefully it'll be sensed. We have a new facilitator now and we'll reconvene, you know, before the year's out on revisiting the master, the strategic plan with the incorporation of an annual work program. Thank you.
First of all, I don't think you're struggling. I want to say, like I said, I've, you know, sat here for a few years now and it is like the best I have possibly seen. So I just want to really commend you because I want you to walk away with some positive feedback instead of negative feedback. That's never helpful. It doesn't motivate a team, it doesn't motivate a city. So I really want to make that clear that we appreciate all the hard work and everything you've put into this strategic plan because it's awesome. It's the best I've seen. And all of us sit on boards where we also do other strategic plans so we know exactly what they look like. And like I said, I think it's absolutely phenomenal. And I apologize because I think all of us made it to our meetings with you and going over strategic plan. I don't think that we should be using that our heads were in budget and somewhere else because our heads are right here today, right now, and commending the work that you're doing. So I wanted to say thank you so much. So with that being said, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Post.
Motion carries. Congratulations, great job.
Thanks, Erica.
Okay, we're going to take a break. I think Carl, will you get you?
Let's just finish.
Oh, we're all, okay.
Okay, Madam Mayor.
Never mind, Carl. Never mind.
We can move on to agenda item F. And to just say, if anyone on Zoom would like to speak, please raise your hand at this time. We've not received any public comment in chambers or via writing and it looks like no one's hand is raised.
All right, have a motion.
I'm going to read this one real quick.
Okay. Wait, 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 yeah, finally.
Ordinance adoption, ordinance number 6625, case number LDC 22-00044, Coral Academy rezoning, request for zoning map amendment from neighborhood commercial to specific plan district. The plus or minus 2.95 acre project site is located northwest of the intersection of Reno View Drive and Sky Mountain Drive. Site has a master plan land use designation of suburban mixed use, Ward 1. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, at this time, item H1, comments including announcements regarding city boards and commissions. Any from council members?
I have one.
Councilwoman Breckus?
I saw on social media this week that this week starts off more or less special events season with the Reno Half Marathon. And I think it is running race down there. And I just, we've had a lot of change up in our special events staff and I just want to express concern that came to me this week, that is, that special events are managed in a way on weekends, particularly Sundays, that churchgoers, you know, have clear paths and ways to get to church in terms of the traffic control and event management. Because sometimes we've had some hiccups and I think staff has changed over there. Plus, there's been a lot of construction, the loss of the parking lot, public parking lot. So people are parking particularly around the cathedral, St. Thomas Aquinas Cathedral, a little further. Just want to make sure that the message is, is concerned, that the Sunday morning regular activity is also taken to, into account as we gear up for special events. And with that, very excited about that special event. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, I'm going to send it back to you.
Okay, before we go to the final public comment, we can jump to item L1, the redevelopment agency board, to open that up to handle that business.
All right, thank you so much. So at this time, please call the roll.
Certainly. Mayor Hillary Sheeby.
Here.
Jenny Breckus.
Here.
Naomi Dour.
Here.
Oscar Delgado.
Here.
Bonnie Weber.
Here.
Neoma Jordan.
Here.
Devin Reese.
Here.
You have a quorum of the redevelopment agency board.
All right, thank you so much. Do we have any public comment?
There is none registered. If anyone would like to speak on Zoom, please raise your hand at this time. I do not see anybody.
Fantastic. Okay, we're going to be at approval of the agenda. Megan, I have a motion. A second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Then we're going to go on to approval of the minutes. Megan, I have a motion. I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, item, where are we? L5? Any, in comments or board announcement? No? Okay, moving along. We're going to go back to public comment. Do you have any public comment over there, Mr. Clerk?
Sir, we do not have any signed in chambers. If anyone would like to online, please raise your hand at this time. We did receive, oh, sorry, that's for closing public comment. We've not received any written public comment as well and no one has their hand raised. You're good on that front.
Okay, so then Megan, a motion to adjourn. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Did he indicate that we had?
No, well, now we're back on the regular agenda.
Correct. Now we're back to the regular agenda. Item J, closing public comment. If anyone would like to voice their public comment here on Zoom, please raise your hand. We do not have any signed in chambers, however, we have received, but we do have a hand raised last second there. Kelly Clark.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Kelly Clark and I live in Carson City, Nevada. I'm here today because I am the Chair of the Carson City Bee City, Bee City USA number 76. We're the first bee city in the state of Nevada. And I am here to voice my support for City of Reno becoming a bee city. We have seen that this special project as a standing citizens committee can really build community and support expansion of pollinator habitat and provide many opportunities for education. Throughout the months of May and June here in Carson City, we'll be holding presentations on how to landscape for pollinators and we'll be providing information about how to avoid use of pesticides. And I just want to voice my support. We find that this is a very accessible way for us to communicate with the general public and it only takes a little bit of support from the city to make it really workable and really good. So I just want to encourage you to support City of Reno as a bee city and we're here to help them as a sister bee city in any way that we can. And my phone number, if you need it, is 775-315-2719. And that closes my public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for your patience. We did receive 29 written comments, which were in general in nature are not directly associated with an agenda item prior to 4:00 PM, after 4:00 PM on April 26th. These comments were written correspondence received by the Reno.gov online public comment form or by email. Copies have been distributed to the Reno City Council and are available to the public on the Reno.gov meeting portal. 28 were in favor and one expressed concern.
All right, thank you so much.
And with that, we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, great meeting, everyone. Thank you so much.